Boulder Planning Board. This is the City of Boulder Planning Board meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Calling it to order and we have a quorum with the. Tonight. So the first item on our agenda is a public participation, and this is the time where. Uh, any member of the public may address the planning board on any issue other than what we have a public hearing on tonight. And the public hearing we are dealing with tonight is a. Uh, regarding the transportation standards update. That will be uh. That will be dealt with later in this meeting. So if there's any anything else you wish to address us on, now is the time. And Brenda or? Vivian? Not sure which of you maybe uh. Have this, but uh.
We will be a. Facilitating public participation tonight. Um, we just have one community member with us tonight. Um, who would like to speak? I do just want to um, share these briefly. I. Think this community member has been a visitor before, so probably seen these slides in the past. Um, but I just want to share them again very quickly that we do have a vision that we worked on with community members. For civic and productive engagements. Um, and we are here to support the physical, emotional and emotional safety for community members, staff and board and commission members. As well as supporting democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experience and political perspectives. Um, clicking through to the examples, um, I'll just hit on some highlights here. Um, that these are guidelines found in the Boulder revised code and then other um, other guidelines. And some of the highlights that will be upheld during this meeting, that all remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are asked to use the name you're commonly known by. Um, and to display your whole name before being allowed to speak online, and we still only have audio. Um, testimony permitted online at this time. So with that, um, we will go to the list. We do have two people who would like to speak. So Amanda, if you can share the timer, um, we'll start with Sue Prant, followed by Lynn Seagull. So I'll just give one minute for the timer to get up.
Sorry, Brenda, I'm ready. You can go ahead and unmute them and I'll start.
Right. Oh, that's right. It starts right away. Okay, so you should be able to unmute now.
Hi, uh, my name is Sue Prant. I'm the executive committee cycles. Uh, on June fourteenth, the playing board members John Gerstel, Mark McIntyre, joined Community Cycles, two tab members. And two council members on tour of access for the post-CU convention center. Sighted Broadway and Grandview. Community Cycles has been sounding alarms over the access plan. For this project for quite some time as it introduces multiple automobile and truck movements. Unsignaled over the Broadway multi-use path. I wanted to bring this to playing boards tension. And because CU has submitted tech docs as part of the MOA. For this project, it will not come before planning board. Community Cycles and Transportation and VDS staff are meeting this Friday to discuss the tech docs submitted and the traffic study. Community Cycles has had the traffic study reviewed by two engineers and found. Some issues where the traffic study does not meet the DCS or or make some very questionable assumptions. We're working on submitting those to staff in advance. The city's attorney offices told council members that. As long as the submission meets the DCS, nothing can be done and council members are legally advised not to get involved. Is unfortunate our state attorney has persuaded council members not to question matter of safety for legal reasons. We are asking playing board for a few things. First, please send a message to the state attorney. And counsel that they should prioritize public safety. And one way they can do that is by getting involved and at least asking some questions and speaking to this issue. As we weigh through this, it seems CU has a lot of power. Uh, asking counsel to bring the CU chancellor to the table would also be a great step forward in this process. Currently, CU staff are saying they can only do what the state allows them, and this rings hollow because the city would like to see safer measures. We need to be speaking at higher level people at CU. Finally, we invite any playing board members who want to be involved in this issue to join us. I think you all know how to contact me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. And uh, just to respond, I think that we will be talking about this under matters at the. Uh, end of the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and. Lynn, you should be able to unmute now. I'm not sure which device you would prefer.
Well, I heard that. Thank you, but uh, this is not working. This is echoing. Right?
It is. Yeah, let me. Let me see if removing permission to talk on your second device helps. Try again.
Yeah, this is Lynn.
Yeah. Are you on two different devices, Lynn? Lynn, are you on two different devices? If you are, you may need to turn the sound off on one of them. And that should help the echo. You, you should be able to unmute. Now, can you?
Now, can you?
Can you?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, but there is definitely an echo. Um, what if I remove one? Uh, do you have two devices or is are you somehow just logged in twice on one device?
I have, I have, I have, I have.
What, what?
What may, maybe going on?
Yeah.
Is that?
I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't log in. Just a minute.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Walk off and come on, come on. Okay, well, if if John's okay with it, we'll give you a minute to do that before we close open comment.
While we were waiting, there was a question in the chat of about what time are we going to get to matters if if we know? Do we have an estimate of what time we will get to the matters discussion that you talked about, John?
Well, uh, uh, I'm expecting that our public hearing will go fairly quickly. Um. So I would think that by seven or seven thirty, uh, we would be there.
Thank you, John.
That's one man's estimate.
I'm gonna um. See, I do still see Lynn's name. So Lynn, if you're there. I have enabled. Your.
I'm trying to get out.
Oh, no, you're good. No more mute, no more um, echo.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I think. Yeah. You can go ahead and start the timer. We should be all set.
Okay, there was something very odd with my uh, login on that uh, link. And it was not. I had to go through the browser and then I had to answer these questions and stuff that I don't usually have, so it caught me off guard. And um. There's um. Issues the city really needs to hire some. More professional IT people because in every meeting I see this, and this is three years. We're going on three years of these Zoom meetings and a lot of this should be cleared up by now. It really should be. Um. And and then. The things that are important to me are to know who's at this meeting and I can't know, and that's not okay with me. Um. If I go down there live, I know. So why am I being punished for coming remotely? That should be. Um, uh, saved car carbon footprint. And it it better empowers people in inclement weather and various situations. It's, you know. If I have a meeting back to back, I can do it if I can do it on Zoom. And I, there's no way I can do it when I have the commute time. So um. And I don't know how to get this point through. I constantly bother the council and every board. And um, nobody seems to. Care or do anything about it. And it's very basic, you know, just being able to communicate. Um. I'm gonna say again, I think that planning board really needs the fundamental problem that planning board is gonna have in the future. As if this CU South thing comes, comes through. Um, it's real critical and what happened there, Dick Tharp. Um, was the council for CU. He had a deal with Flatiron's gravel. To um, inflate the value by five million dollars to sixteen point five million when the appraisal was about nine. And the city could have bought it at nine, so they edged out their competition. And ironically. In in um, reward for doing that, he was appointed athletic director. And subsequently was reprimanded by Betsy Hoffman for the sexual recruitment scandal. And he's part owner of Liquor Mart before it was taken over by Core, whatever it is that's gonna put. A lot of student housing in there too, as well as the millennium. And the millennium is really should not be demolished. And it should be restored and repurposed for bolder purposes. Because we need the sales tax revenue ourselves not to hand it over to CU. Thanks.
Um, Brenda? I, I just wanted to ask, uh, when does bring up issues with Zoom with some regularity? And my question is, as a participant. Can I see the participant list?
No, and um, and there's no way that we can enable participants to see that in the webinar format. Um, in addition, I do feel like there's a privacy concern there because when you attend in person. You know who's there if you know them. But if you don't, you don't get necessarily get a list of the names of people who are at a meeting. And this would be providing a list of names of people who are at a meeting. Um, so that, so there is that dual reason for not sharing that information.
And can I, um, oh. Mark, to follow up on that, just Lynn, if you're still out there, we on planning board cannot see who's here either. So you're not, you're not the only person. All we can see is the staff. Um, we can't see who else is is here. So.
In, in.
The Zoom or the format is not um, kind of picking on the public to keep them isolated. We're not privy to that either, just FYI.
I'll, I'll go ahead as a staff, as a panelist, ML, if you clicked on the participant icon. Um, and clicked over to attendees, you would be able to see who's here. Because we, we also don't want our attendees to feel like they're entirely invisible to um, board and staff. Again, it's a list of names. So if you know folks, you know folks. If you don't, you don't, but um, at the bottom of your screen or in your, where it says more. There should be a something you can click on that's participants.
All my shows is um, is. Is the staff.
And then if you click on the top, it, there's one that says panelist and one that says attendees.
Oh. Hi, Lynn.
Yes, it did. Yeah.
I got it.
Um, but but that is a way to know who who in our community has joined us on any given evening for you all to have that.
Sorry to interrupt, Mark.
Yeah, no, no worries. And we just don't have a way um, to share that with community members. And again. Um, there is that piece of it would be sharing more private information than you share in an in-person meeting.
Okay, um. I, there, there, is that all of those who wish to speak tonight? I think so. So uh. There, uh, I see no dispositions or call-ups to be considered tonight. So we'll be moving right into our public hearing item. And that is uh, the. The public hearing and recommendation to city council for transportation standards update phase two. Of the design and construction standards of the Boulder Revised Code. Uh, and uh, I am, I think that'll be uh. Edward Stafford, who may be leading the show there. And uh, will describe to us what is going on tonight and what we are being asked to address.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, my name is Edward Stafford. I'm a senior manager of civil engineering and planning development services. Also with me tonight is Garrett Slater. He's our principal traffic guard, uh, excuse me, principal transportation projects engineer and transportation and mobility. So we are here tonight to talk about the transportation standards update. As a reminder, this is phase two of what is a multi-phase project. Tonight we'll have a public hearing and consideration of a recommendation for the updates to both the DCS and certain provisions in the Boulder Revised Code. You have previously seen this several times, actually, um, as it's progressed. The most recent was last May. Uh, when you saw the sixty percent version of this. So tonight we're gonna talk a little bit about the purpose and background, just as a reminder where this project is and where it's going. The timeline and the community engagement that we've held and what is, what we have done with that. We will quickly review final proposed changes. I can certainly move either slower or quicker through that if you want more detail. As we get to that, please feel free to interrupt me. Otherwise, keep moving through fairly quick. Um, because this is a public hearing matter. You'll have a public hearing and finally, finally, a consideration of a recommendation. So what's the purpose and background? The DCS is actually used as the standards for construction of public infrastructure. In the city, both by private parties, usually development related, and the city's capital projects. That public infrastructure includes utilities, water sewer, sanitary, or storm sewer, uh, also includes all of the transportation. So. Uh, bike, bike, pad facilities, street facilities, those items are all managed of the design of it through the standards adopted in the design and construction standards. Uh, with there also recommendations in the Boulder Revised Code, which are some regulatory items that relate to some of this work in here in both site distance. Site triangles and some landscaping items we're bringing forward to you tonight. Uh, the phase two had a very specific focus um, on a couple of specific areas as a part of the DCS. The street geometric design, which was a part of our chapter two, section seven. Uh, that did generate some other changes in other sections truly related to what was being done in street geometric design, which we'll discuss in a moment. The landscaping chapters, those three and ten, and then the Boulder Revised Code six dash six, which is related to the protection of trees and plants. In site triangles as part of Boulder Revised Code nine nine seven. As a part of all of this, there's also some changes to some of the technical drawings in chapter eleven. As a reminder, the role of the planning board in this overall process is to review these for matches with the policy and for matching with the project goal. Uh, this has also been presented to the Transportation Advisory Board. So you will be looking at it to make a recommendation to the city council, who ultimately through legislative process would have the opportunity to adopt the changes. Or to make other modifications depending on what they see um, as the appropriate answer. Reminder, this is the second phase. So we had a first phase back in twenty twenty that made some. Uh, cleanup and standardization throughout parts of the transportation section. This phase two had the focus that we've talked about here, and there are future phases expected to kick off starting later next year, looking at additional changes. We were doing this in a phased approach in order to recognize limitations of resources and how much we can complete at one time. While trying to also ensure that we are making some more modifications to keep us in alignment with transportation master plan, which is a. The, uh, really the underlying goals, the transportation system, and then we're able to implement those. So what were the project goals? Um, you saw these actually early on in this phase, um, almost two years ago. And again, uh, back in May when you saw the sixty percent, there were four primary goals identified. The first was. Looking to continue the update and modernization to ensure we had uh, standards that were uniformly applied to both private and public projects. The second was the update of street geometric design with a goal of decreasing the potential and or severity of conflicts. A lot of that has to do even with the looking at speed, looking at uh, crossing distances, some of those pieces that are really part of the geometric design that you're gonna see. The third was to uh, modernize and update the landscape standards to ensure they're fiscally maintainable and aligned with our environmental sustainability goals. And the fourth was to update site triangles to include new requirements for multi-use paths. Just a reminder where we are, we did start back in September of twenty twenty. We are now in the board recommendation as we had to city council approval, so. That second to the last bucket there and are working towards adoption later this year. Community engagement has been a very important part of this project as we've worked through it. Uh, that is included consultation with the community at large through online questionnaire that was made available. And a set of office hours we had available with project staff. We did hear from a few community members. There's not uh, necessarily lots of interest from general community. Which is not surprising, given the very technical nature of these standards and this work. We also completed direct outreach to groups that regularly either use the DCS or have indicated a high interest in the topics, including parts of the development community. The Community Cycles uh, group, which has been very much a part of the. Update multiple phases and has been very actively engaged. The Center for People with Disabilities, CDOT, RTD, and the Boulder Community Improvement Association, as it relates especially to some of the landscape items that they have uh, interest in. So were key areas that we heard from that engagement. Keep in mind, a lot of engagement did happen between the sixty percent version, which is what you saw last May. And what is now in front of you is being recommended for adoption. Um, those key uh, inputs, some of them we were able to include in the update. Uh, that included narrow or lane widths to slow vehicle traffic. In fact, we did make a few more modifications between the sixty percent. And what you're seeing for today based upon some of that input and additional analysis. Uh, minimizing left turn lanes to minimize crossing distance, and you'll see some strong language about that. Uh, supporting additional raised crossing details, something that we've been building more up, but didn't have specific details. Support for minimizing corner radii is a method to reduce turning vehicle speeds. As well as a desire to make sure we still accommodate the larger vehicles such as transit as appropriate. And uh, making sure ultimately we can build facilities that we can maintain. There were some input that we were not able to address in this update, but will be in future. Uh, we had some input concerning excessive signage and markings and what that leads to. Um, that was not part of the area that we were looking at in this particular phase. Um, and some concern on whether or not um, traffic circles. Uh, roundabouts even more likely, um, we're meeting the best needs of pedestrians and people with disabilities to be able to cross and navigate. Again, things that we can, can and do intend would be looked at in a future phase, but are not a part of this phase. Uh, the last piece of the input that has recently occurred came from the Transportation Advisory Board. Similar to what you're doing tonight, they held a public hearing on September twelfth regarding the changes. Tab members did express appreciation for the work that's been done, also expressed support for future phases of the project to address additional topics. One of those uh, that was. Very much highlighted by them was uh, additional work in the area of sidewalk requirements. We expect that to be in a future phase. And then ultimately, they did have a unanimous motion to recommend adoption of the DCS and the Boulder Revised Code updates. Um, between that point and what you're seeing now, we have continued to work on specific language in the DCS. And what you're seeing even tonight is still draft in terms of some of the final grammar and final wording as we continue to work with the city attorney's office to ensure we have something readily enforceable. What you are seeing and will not change in this is the true uh. Content, so the requirements that are in there, but we will be continuing to work to revise, to clean it up, to ensure we have the right formatted in the plainness document by the time it's presented to council. Wanted to point that out in case there are concerns with, or as you may have done your review and certainly saw there were still some areas that. Now needed some grammatical work, needed some legal work, and we continue to work on that. The other part of this that we kept in mind beyond the four goals that you saw was looking at our design, the sustainability principles. Um, and how that really aligns to the transportation system overall, including looking at the transportation master plan and our Vision Zero goals. And the city sustainability framework, sharing that just as an understanding of part of the larger lens that we look at for each of these updates as we continue moving forward. So the final proposed changes, what's in front of you, uh, that we're asking for a recommendation tonight. Includes the street geometric design in that section two point oh seven. Along with some additional modifications that that created in the bicycle facilities and multi-use path designs in two point one one. Would point out that we didn't necessarily open that entire section uh, for more revision. And some of that section was actually first created in the last update in twenty twenty, uh, but there were some changes then that needed to be further recognized. Similar as we went through geometric design, realized that uh, some additional. Design standards and guidance was needed in traffic calming. Well, we uh, debated whether you would incorporate that into existing section. Ultimately. We have decided to add a new section two point one four with a couple of the areas that are more related to geometric. That may expand in the future in additional phases that could add additional traffic calming uh, sections into their additional information on other mechanisms we may use. Um, and we've talked then the fact that we've looked at chapter three and ten, along with the related drawings in eleven for all of these. And then the Boulder Revised Code changes. I'm gonna quickly just step through some of what has happened in there. You've already seen some of this from May, so I'm gonna work through this fairly quick. If I don't hit on something you want to talk about, feel free to either ask at the end or interrupt me. Two point oh seven, the street geometric design, heavily focused on looking at our lane widths. On separated bike lanes and providing additional design standards, or in some cases, the new design standards for those. Uh, the, uh, looked at very closely corner radii, and in fact, changed the philosophical approach to part of that and looking at. The theoretical versus the actual and ensuring that we're doing uh, something in alignment with our goals about. Reducing severity of conflict through the reduction of speed. Uh, road width tapers, especially as it related to bicycle lane changes were added. And then additional on left turn lanes on their design and limitations about double and triple left turns. No, not gonna read through each of these. There are more detail about lane widths overall, um, the fact that we have provided new standards to that. Um, I would point out that resulted in a new table replacing one that uh, was in there in two point five with significantly more detail. On the variety of different types of facilities, especially related to the bike, the buffered separated and two-way bike lanes. And we, uh, reductions overall in some areas of lane widths. One of the changes that did occur on here between the sixty percent and what you're seeing now was that in that general purpose travel lane with the fixed route transit, it was originally a twelve foot. And we heard through the input concern on twelve foot is a fairly significant size lane. Was that appropriate? And we went back to look some further at it. Um, understanding implications to transit, and you'll see that has changed to an eleven foot now. So that's a good example of some of what we. Took to heart, and we've heard things to look at a second time to see what should we do with those. Similar provided additional uh, information on separated bike lanes on how uh. Including details about the assumed operating speed of bicycles in the design features that should be included. Corner radii is indicated had a fairly significant change to provide much greater direction to designers on how to achieve the smallest effective radii of curves. And also looking much more uh, at the use of curve extensions and how that can further benefit. The goal and achieve the goals that we're looking at. Um, so you see there's a brand new uh, table that looks rather complex that's looking at what's the radius, actual radius effective. Not gonna go through all of these numbers now. That should help certainly in what you have seen in projects throughout uh, the years here where we're working to ensure we have. The smallest radius that is still functional for the needs of the intersection and ensures. That the, if the infrastructure itself uh, is maintainable and usable. Um, as a part of that, some additional figures were added to help depict what we were talking about within the DCS on corner radii. Uh, road with tapers again, mentioned this one, bike lane tapers were added. And we have seen some problems previously with some very abrupt tapers or a change in direction that is definitely. At least a discomfort with bicycles, so adding additional design standards to that. And then left turn lanes, which, uh, as I said, was significantly about clarifying the preference to single left turn lanes. And what the standards and what you need to go through if it's gonna be anything greater than that. Uh, and that is an area where we actually did make some additional modification from the sixty percent to the ninety percent and further restricted and required specific approval. Prior to anybody designing anything greater than a single turn lane. Uh, and the section two point one one, the bicycle facilities and multi-use path designs. Added additional standards as it related to separated bike lanes and their crossings at both driveways and at intersections. Um, new figures, a new direction were provided in there, recognizing that as a. A facility type that was not, certainly not contemplated in two thousand when many of these centers were first. Uh, or last hadn't significantly rewrite, and so it was important to add those pieces as we see more of those facilities being designed and utilized in our system. Now I'm gonna go through all of the direct drawings, and then we did talk we about the traffic coming and added the two new measures in there, neighborhood traffic circles. Which I point out is different than a roundabout intersection. This is about the small traffic circles as it relates to calming or lowering speeds in neighborhoods. And raised crossings, which we identified as a need for better design standards to help guide the designers of those as we're seeing more of them in use. Of those as we're seeing more of them in use. Um again, not going to go through all of those details. Chapter eleven related drawings, a number of new and updated ones were made, not gonna go through each of those unless you have questions on them. Moving along beyond the street geometric was the landscape, landscape and streetscape revisions. This was uh work to incorporate and analysis has been done actually for multiple years by multitude of groups. Including uh participants from our transportation mobility department, parks and recreation and forestry. Number of things that we needed to update, make sure we were aligned with our green infrastructure plan for transportation landscapes. Also includes ensuring those landscapes are something we can physically maintain. Um in looking at changes that have really happened since this section was last uh written and had major updates. Uh this does apply to both. Projects again constructed by private developers in the public right of way and public projects that may be completed through our capital improvement program. You'll see revisions were made throughout um all of this, not gonna go through each of these. Do you know there was some question I uh about why we made some change, you will see that we have actually are proposing to delete some. Uh lists of accepted tree and plant species, it's not because we're gonna let a free for all happen. What is recognized is that list tends to be something that changes more frequently than we update the DCS and the process to do such. And so by removing it from here and referencing that there will be an annually published adopted list. Which is already available on the website in the parks and the recreation and forestry area. That will allow our forestry staff especially to continue to monitor what's appropriate for our. Uh climate, for our landscape, appropriate types of uh plantings. And be able to update that without going through this significant process of re-adopting a piece of the DCS. So I know that was a question out there, Sarah.
Edward, can I just, um so they'll, I didn't see that reference in the document, um so there'll be an annually published list. Of the wildflowers, the trees and the shrubs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh let's see, there were some additional revisions made as it related to tree plantings to ensure the. Um opportunity for good long-term health of trees, especially in uh con- constrained streetscapes. It's an area where we've done a lot of work over the years and had a lot of experimentation even through some capital projects and. Helping to bring those now standards into play for projects. Um and then through that, recognize we also thought it was appropriate to make some changes in the Boulder revised code. To clarify the requirements for the protection of trees and plants on any city property or right of way. Added additional about protection from damage, the original code was more geared towards uh removal or destruction, but there was a. Did not have as strong a provision as we feel is necessary to ensure damage is prevented. Or in the result of damage that we're able to have. Uh proper financial remedies for those, should somebody do something that they shouldn't have to these uh important. Public infrastructure components of trees and plants, so that's what you'll see in there. Um and then also site triangles as uh that fourth goal. Recognizing that uh we had two areas that we wanted to work on here to ensure that our site triangles were. Meeting some of our greater multimodal need and were more easily enforceable. The first one is a modification to the language on the fifteen by fifteen site triangle, which has been in the code for for many, many. Decades, I would presume, um but it was a challenge on enforcement because the measurement as it was written. Was related to the property line right of way line, which is not something that's always readily evident and visible, of course, not visible at all when you're in the field. And if you were getting into strong enforcement, you more or less needed a survey to be able to determine that. And at times that line may not have been in the most appropriate place for the application of site triangles. So this makes some modifications to ensure that site triangle is actually placed where we want it to be in comparison to streets with uh. Sidewalks or if there aren't sidewalks that we're uh, we have it in a way that you're measuring it from something you can physically see in the field. And apply it in a way that ensures the right level of um I'll call it protection or visibility for those sites. Then the other change was that uh we in the current site triangles and the Boulder revised code did not recognize multi-use paths as they intersected with alleys and driveways. With the an appropriate site triangle, recognizing the multimodal approach of multi-use paths, so you will see. A new one in there that. In addition to the fifteen by fifteen on these specific circumstances, requires a new fifteen by ninety six. Partially in recognition of the difference in speed that you will see from bicycle users on those multi-use paths. We do expect there will be future phases to look at other site triangle um updates that we need to make. It's uh that there's always a challenge in working through those built conditions of existing. And what do you do if you create something that's no longer in compliance, recognizing we're not likely to tell people to go chop the corner off an existing building. Especially historic buildings that have been here for a long time, but really in general. So expect there may be more input in that in the future for additional scenarios, but felt this was a really important one to bring forward now. That's a very quick review of all of the items um that you have in front of you. The next steps, of course, we're now here on the October eleventh planning board meeting. And then currently that's scheduled to go in front of council in November and December for their public hearing and we uh recommend approval and adoption hopefully. And then implementation would start in twenty twenty three. Keep in mind, implementation is not looking back, these are the standards for things that are designed from that point into the future. Um so it is not about going out to say, well, that's no longer in compliance and has to be modified, uh the DCS is about looking forward. The key issue in front of you tonight is do these updates to both the DCS and the VRC, meet the goals of the project and your recommendation to city council. With that, I believe I've hit my twenty minute mark and I'm gonna stop talking.
Thank you, that was nicely timed. Um, okay, so um I'll open it up to uh the board for questions at this point. Sarah.
Thanks, um so I my focus tonight's gonna be on the trees. Um, and so I just have some clarifying questions. Um, is there a difference between uh the city tree lawn and a planting strip? There weren't definitions and both were mentioned, so I'm trying to understand if they are different or the same.
Not necessarily different, uh they both apply as it relates to the requirement for street trees that's in the Boulder revised code.
So what is a plant, I'm, so what is a planting strip?
The planting strip frequently is that that distance that's usually in a separated between the sidewalk and the curb. Or if it's an attached sidewalk, it would be the area behind the sidewalk.
Okay, so. Is it okay, uh uh, am I uh? Will it make sense if I ask questions uh that are, I'm applying to both planting strip and and you. You'll understand what I'm asking.
Yes.
Um, if you don't mind, I just wanna follow up on that, um. So, uh. Uh do you happen to know or have a guesstimate of what percentage of planting strips across the city are less than? Four feet in width?
I do not in terms of what's existing, I can say that it's certainly not something that we. On the development side would have, I have approved in projects of any recent vintage, but I don't know in terms of existing. Out there, what is that?
Is there a, is there a um? Uh in the code, is there a an out, is there a uh required or minimum um? Uh planting strip width at this point?
Um I believe what we have in this proposal that DCS and was already in there is an eight foot. In some circumstances, it can go down to six. Generally, from a forestry standpoint, nothing less than six is considered a good growth opportunity for those trees.
Okay. Um, I will have other questions, but let's circle around and come back to me, thank you.
Okay, Laura.
Thank you, fir- first, a big thank you to Edward and the staff who have worked on this. I do remember when it came around previously and uh you know, I'm not a engineer or an expert in this, but it's clear that a lot of hard work went into this. A lot of great engineering to try to meet the needs that are expressed and do that in a mathematical and enforceable and standardized way. So just big kudos to the staff who worked on this, thank you so much for taking this on. Um and giving us a much better DCS, also really nice to see changes between the sixty percent draft and the ninety percent draft based on public input. And the input of the different boards and experts that you consulted. Love it when when staff really gets good useful input and is able to work that in, so thank you for that. Um I'm gonna concentrate on site triangles as you might have anticipated. So um that new site triangle, the fifteen by ninety six where I think it's ninety six, where the multi-use path intersects with a. A driveway or an alley, I was super excited to see that. And so my question revolves around the scenario, how how this intersects with the drive through regulations around having that wall for screening? So which one trumps, is it the site triangle or the wall for screening? I'll start with that.
I would say actually neither trumps, they will need to have come up with a design that meets the requirements and the intent behind both. Um so you know, they would need to look at having the wall far enough back, but still able to come uh to screen as required in. Title nine, but they couldn't put that wall within the area of the site triangle.
Oh, okay, alright.
You get the best of both worlds there.
Okay, I think that, okay, so then I guess so applied to the design that we saw from raising cane. As you know, my big concern there was with um public safety and how that the exiting traffic, entering and exiting traffic intersecting that multi-use path. And you know, the desire to have visibility there, but then also have a screening wall. So this new ninety, you know, fifteen by ninety six site triangle, would that have changed the design for raising canes at all?
Um as I recall, I don't think it would have, um we did look at, well, we didn't have this as something adopted to use, I know we were looking at it. I do know that it certainly complied with the fifteen by fifteen. Um but as I recall, I I don't know that this would have clipped it, um if so though, once these are adopted. That would have to have been changed, uh or would have to have to look different to any future plan that was proposed.
Okay, thank you, Edward.
Okay, Mel.
Thank you, John, um good evening Edward, thank you for your work and your. Nice concise presentation, there's a lot of information here tonight. Um I have uh three kind of areas of. Of questions, I'll I'll start with trees since that was already put out there. Um and I'll just refer to the page where it was uh referenced on page one forty six. There is um. The information about removing dead trees and problem trees on private land. That the city can do that, and I am wondering if there is any. Any thinking about protecting um. Robust and healthy trees on private land that would become a. That people would want to remove in the process of development, is there any?
So that was not part of the scope for this work, um you know, that could certainly be something in a future work program. Um, that's, yeah, you know, a lot of this work was really related to the public infrastructure side. Um do know that there's been interest certainly over the years in the community that. Protection of private trees, of course, something in a site review um has some criteria to be balanced related to that, but no, this does not. Change the protections that are in place or lack of protections, I should say today uh with these changes.
So it would be in the um. It would be in the six dash six that is getting updated, you know, that includes the mitigation of trees or plants.
There could certainly be an area to add, it added if we were to do that, yes.
Yeah, and I'm speaking to the purpose of the best practices around sustainability. Sure, I think we all are increasingly aware that um especially big, healthy, robust trees have an important. Uh role to play in the city and um I'm. I'm interested in the possibility that they, we can begin to look at how do we grant protection. To those because you see that happen so many times, these wonderful big. Fabulous trees that not only deal with um with heat, but you know, they. Create habitat and provide many other things and and. It's a public good on private property, so it would be um. I think it does fall under the purpose, um and as you say, a- and you're looking at six dash six, so. I I I just put that out there, uh. I have two other questions, um on page one oh eight, you talked about seeding and sodding. So my question would be, what are the pros and or cons of using anything other than native grasses? I mean, why would we ever wanna use grasses that would require uh long-term water use?
Yeah, it's a great question, was not something certainly that was looked at in here, I think that it would be something. To be considered as a much larger change in landscape, especially given that. I know a lot of that is gonna apply to the landscape standards in title nine, rather than what's in the DCS. Which is truly limited to what's happening on public lands, you bring up an excellent point of things that I do, you know, see. Further conversations happening in the future as it relates to water conservation, environmental sustainability, just was not an area that was identified in here. Um and would actually, you know, involve changes, much more significant changes in title nine.
Um. Yeah, it's in the, what did I say, page one oh eight. Of the proposed changes, so. It's here um in the, you know, in the areas that are being redlined.
Right.
And um. Uh around the concerns for sustainability. I just, I just again bring it up into, I think we, we have to find ways to um. To get this kind of thinking and language into our uh codes.
Sure.
Whatever it shows up and and here it is on this page that we're revising, so that's. Um seeding and sodding and you know, just general question, page one eleven. Another similar question I have, which is around irrigation. Um. Why wouldn't we go with non-potable water as a requirement? I mean, why are we still, it's okay to irrigate with potable water, why? Why aren't we segueing into uh, you know, using water with. The present actually drought and and you know, we're already talking about, there's gonna be water restrictions and why? Why wouldn't we start to put into our, our current thinking? You know, this would go into effect in twenty twenty three. Um. Shifting our irrigation from potable water to non-potable water.
Yes, that would be a very much a significant undertaking in cooperation with utilities department, because the city doesn't currently have a non-potable water system. There are also significant concerns as it relates to our water rights and what is allowed under the water that we have. So the vast majority of our water portfolio only allows a single use, and so we would actually uh. Have great liability and and risk to create a non-potable system without um separating out or identifying what rights we could do with that. So again, um not necessarily something that would be handled as much in the DCS, it is about a much larger program undertaking. Um to go to a non-potable water system. Um and to implement the regulations that are required for such coming from the state.
So I'm I'm hearing that a lot of the question, and that's all my questions, but I'm just gonna make, oh, I do have one more, but have. I, what I'm putting on the table is um. Is we have to anticipate that. We've got all these issues that climate change has laid at our feet. And um I think it's, it it behooves us. To start being very comprehensive about how can we get as many things in place when we have the opportunity. And so I just would encourage um you know, staff to. Uh begin a process of a broader, I mean, sustainability is part of the purpose of this particular project. And I I think we can't underestimate the um importance. Uh of some of these, of some of these issues and to, you know, to get, to get a leap into them as soon as we possibly can. So that's my general, um I have a tiny other little question, when you were talking about speed. I think you called it calling, but anyway, speed, you know, slowing down. I didn't hear you talk about, uh it seems like everywhere we're looking, we're getting humps and bumps, so are those? Hmm. Are those not gonna exist anymore, we're gonna do just roundabouts or what's happening?
Yeah, I wouldn't say they won't exist, they weren't, because they weren't really part of the geometric design, they weren't part of what was in here, I suspect that could be a future phase. And Garrett, did you want to add anything further to that?
Yes, uh for the record, Garrett Slater, Principal Transportation Projects Engineer and. The uh devices that you are seeing around the community, um sometimes they're speed humps, sometimes they're what they're, we call speed cushions. Those are largely the result of the. Those are largely the result of the neighborhood speed management or its predecessor, the neighborhood traffic mitigation programs. And that program, program, the program is currently on pause. And so the DCS is not the primary mechanism by which those devices are implemented on city streets. It's that separate program on that's uh and and nearly um ninety-nine percent of the time, those facilities are implemented by city staff and not via development.
Got it. Okay, well, thank you so much. That's the end of my questions, and I really appreciate um the vast amount of work that has gone into these. Um, into these updating these standards. Thank you so much.
Mark, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thanks, John. Um, and so. I I I'm gonna begin by apologizing to my fellow board members because I'm gonna have a lot of questions tonight. And I'm gonna ask two, and then we'll go around again and then I'll ask some more when uh. When everyone's had uh had their had their time. So um. And I'm gonna ask the first one, I sent an email before the meeting uh to um. Edward and Natalie and and Natalie, I'm sure she shared that with Garrett. Uh, and my, and so in that email, I both provided some uh prior documentation about sightlines. As they relate to fifteenth and Iris uh in the pedestrian bike crossing that is slated to be. Rebuilt and improved there sometime this year, early next year. And I want to emphasize something before I carry on, and that is while I have. Uh, extensive experience with this particular intersection and. People who staff in the transportation planning department might think it is my sole focus. It is, it is really a focus that I'm trying to direct to how. Uh, the DCS and sightlines and requirements are applied to. Uh, our vision zero goals of transportation master plan uh and so forth. So. While it may seem like I'm focusing on fifteenth and Iris, I'm trying to use it as a as a concrete. Literally example of of how these things affect uh. Daily commuters and and people in in neighborhoods. So my question from that. Uh, from that email is. Does the new design of the proposed, the proposed changes to the fifteenth and Iris pedestrian bike crossing? Does the new design uh that has pedestrians and bikes crossing? The um southbound uh traffic lane on fifteenth. To access a new bike pad. I call it a box because we sometimes we talk about bike boxes or whatever, but. And off as the slightly off-street um bike pedestrian facility on the west side of fifteen. On the south side of Iris, does that comply with the site triangle requirements? If you replace the car in figure nine eight of of the DCS with a bike. And place the bike thirteen feet back from the curb edge or or beginning of the crossing way. And so I provided a um a kind of a crude sketch. Of modifying figure nine eight. So that's, that's my question for Ed and Garrett right now.
I think Garrett's gonna address this one. I apologize. I have not had a chance, Mark, to read your email. I've been in meetings. Okay, solid all day, all the way up till this one.
Yes, uh, yeah, I I appreciate uh having the heads up, but give me some time to put together a a quick ad hoc exhibit. Mark uh to share with you, but first, um, just for some general sort of baseline understanding, it might be helpful to take a look. At the figures that you're referencing. So I am going to um uh share. The example that uh I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully I've got privileges. It looks like I do. Okay. All right, so this is the figure that you were describing that uh it has changed and um. So I think there's an important uh distinction between this exhibit and what is taking place on fifteenth and Iris, but. First, just to talk through this. So as Edward noted, what's changing here is that when we have a driveway or an alley. Approaching a multi-use path, we want to be able to increase the site visibility. Because users of the multi-use path are typically going to be traveling at a higher rate of speed than users of a sidewalk. And consistent with uh. The uh American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials Bike Way Design Guide. Uh, as well as the National Association of City Transportation Officials Guidelines for Intersection Site Distances. Between minor approach streets and multi-use paths. That's the basis of this ninety-six foot site triangle recommendation. The uh as Edward noted also in the presentation, when you have a driveway or an alley approaching a sidewalk, in that instance. The side triangle would be fifteen feet. So um I'm going to now change over to the uh. The ad hoc exhibits that I prepared for uh fifteenth and Iris. And um I didn't have time to make this super fancy. I grabbed this literally right out of the AutoCAD design model. Um, so just uh for those that are looking at this, this is what we call the signing and pavement marking plan for fifteenth and Iris. And so north is up and this is Iris Street in the east-west direction. And the I I I know it's faint to see, but this light cyanish bluish color are the improved improvements. Uh, the concrete improvements that will happen at the intersection. And so what we're proposing to do here is to lengthen that raised crossing median. All the way to the east side of the intersection to preclude left turns in. So this will become a right in and right out only intersection. And what we're also going to do is for cyclists that have come off what we call the thirteenth. Um, the green thirteen street, green street, uh, that facility generally terminates right here at fifteenth and Iris. We will have a a bike only left turn lane, which directs cycling traffic over to a multi-use path on the west side here. And um because this is a sidewalk and not a uh multi-use path along the south side. Of Iris, the requirement is for a fifteen by fifteen foot site triangle at this corner, which this. Design satisfies. So that uh uh on the on the base level, it satisfies the the new DCS or excuse me, the new. Um, uh Boulder guise code site triangle requirement. But furthermore, I I knew that Mark would be curious to know, okay, well, that's for a sidewalk. What if you do have a cyclist riding along the sidewalk? So that's what this next slide depicts is um in this instance, what we want to know is um. Or is the the vehicle who is sitting here at the approach to Iris on fifteen street? Are are they going to have adequate visibility to a cyclist who's riding along the sidewalk right here? Uh, and and so if we apply that fifteen by ninety-six foot tri-site triangle to this intersection. Even then, uh, it appears that we're meeting the requirement uh change that's being uh recommended in the uh the Boulder revised code. Um, so it appears in both instances here that the site triangle requirements are being met with the fifteenth and Iris design change.
Okay, thank you. And and um, so Garrett, you had. Actually had the page that I sent on your screen just a moment ago. Can you? Um, okay, and can you scroll down? Because again, I I actually, uh, so this. Is from the, I I re- I understand. This is not a heavily edited portion of site triangle discussion in the DCS. However. The DCS is being edited. Uh, for site triangles and. We have an instance that to me indicates either. Uh, the the tables in the DCS are not being. Uh, may, they're being applied differently than how I read them. So on a page, if I go to. It's page one forty-six in the PDF. It's page four of five. In the um attachment E. There's a table. And that table addresses a street-to-street site triangle. For vehicles, and that's the diagram that's shown. So if we go back to the diagram. That you had up the PDF.
Okay, uh, yeah, I was trying to find the other one you were.
Okay, I'm sorry. I I I'm just, I'll I'll just reference it so people know where it is. It's one forty-six in our packet PDF. Or page four of five in the attachment B. Okay, so this is. The current, um, it it this nine dash eight applies to. The table nine dash nine. So the table nine dash nine says, okay, I have a residential street intersecting. With another street that is either three or four lanes. So Iris in this particular instance is three lanes. With a bike lane. The speed limit on the table is thirty to thirty-five miles per hour. Iris is thirty-five at this point. It says the site triangle, the Y-left site triangle. Should be, it the this, the minimum specification is a hundred and fifty feet. From, so in this case, you're showing an automobile with that side triangle and the sudden from the table. The distance should be a hundred and fifty feet. My question is, we have a bike, which in essence is in the same. Safety mode of transportation as this car is shown here, only we've asked them to move over. Farther to the west and get off the street and then attempt to cross the three lanes of Iris. So if if I apply. That the bike is just like the car and has the same desire to cross the street and the same desire. And the same need to have a hundred and fifty foot sight line. If a bike and and this this distance, you as you note here in your in your drawing, it's thirteen feet from the curb. So if I put myself on a bike thirteen feet back from the curb. Do I have a hundred and fifty foot sight line? To the west on Iris so that the cars can see me and I can see the cars. That is my question.
Yeah, so I I I appreciate the question, Mark. That helps to uh to better explain um your your line of inquiry here. So. Uh, I I I think it's important to understand that this table and this figure is not intended for the bike approach. But rather it's for a vehicle uh uh where um. You need to make sure that you've got adequate distance for a um a vehicle that's going to be um departing an intersection. Uh, a- as well as a a vehicle that's oncoming. And so the presence uh in this table of the bike lane and on-street parking. Is an adjustment for the additional sort of buffer distance between the outside travel lane and um. And and the visibility of the vehicle sitting on the minor street. And so this one hundred and fifty foot dimension, um, it is more, it it's not for the purpose of the bike. It's more so for the vehicle to make sure it has adequate time to be able to uh maneuver off the minor street and onto the major street. Uh, to make sure that it's got um adequate visibility uh to be able to make that, uh, say a left turn onto the uh the to the major street.
Would wouldn't the um person on a bicycle have exactly the same. Requirement, needs, desires, and safety concerns as as the person in the car? And in fact. They're they're more vulnerable and less visible than than the person in the car.
Yeah, yes, so they they do have the same need for visibility. However, the cyclist will not be stopped thirteen feet back. Though the cyclist, and I'm gonna switch back over to um this uh exhibit here. So the the cyclist will will be sitting right here on on the southwest corner. Um, and I I I we could uh make a determination um. Uh, I, you know, uh, I guess, uh, this is, uh. I'm actually inside the AutoCAD model right here. So let me see if I can uh move this triangle uh. And uh and and um see what that does for us, but um. If the cyclist is sitting right here uh at the at the corner. Uh, what we can see is uh there's, we're meeting again the ninety-six foot requirement. Um, but if you were to drag this uh triangle out further, um. And then uh see what that does to your dimension line. Let's see, I I would expect it would uh meet that. Yeah, so here you are with a hundred and fifty feet. And it's important to also note, um, unlike the vehicle who's going to be making the maneuver off the side street, the cyclist is going to have the option. Uh, and in fact, the requirement to push the the um the button, which will activate a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at this location. To provide additional cautions to approaching motorists.
All right, out of respect for my fellow board members, I'm going to stop here. I'll make comments later. And I'm going to ask another question. Garrett, I appreciate you, your uh being prepared to discuss this tonight. And uh, we can, we can pick this up, but uh anyway, I'll I'll ask a. One more, uh, one more question, and then we can, then we can, we can move on. But my question will be unrelated. To this particular issue. So again, thank you for uh being prepared with that. Um, my 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 other question is in regard to uh traffic circles, which um. I've had multiple discussions with other people in the transportation department about the current traffic circles on Pine. And Mapleton. And so as I look at uh the revisions here under traffic calming. Uh, figure two dash XX on uh. PDF page sixty-two of our packet, the DCS page, page sixty of one forty-nine. It says it 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 it, there's a table with offsets, et cetera. And and my um and and it also mentions um the um truck apron, center island and truck apron. My question is. Does, does, and do any of the current traffic circles? Uh, which I consider to be um poorly designed and lacking in deflection. Meaning as cars approach them. They 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 move a little to the right, a little to the left, and the dominant street that would be Pine or Mapleton. Those people assume that they go through and the people on the uh minority street. The minority in terms of traffic, uh, they end up stopping. And the traffic circle does not function as as is intended. Do any of those circles meet the requirements of your proposed? Of your proposed new requirements in in the in the DCS under traffic circles?
That's a good question, Mark. I I don't know the answer to 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 uh how how those are conforming to this new standard or not.
I I would hope not. I would hope that the answer is they do not conform. They're they're old design. They're bad. They're terrible. And gee, the combination of the uh slightly elevated truck apron, which I understand is for emergency vehicles and larger vehicles. But that, but that this this new table um creates enough deflection. That speeds are actually slowed and traffic is actually calm. Um, because that's the intent. Our current set of traffic circles, unless you can point me to one that I'm missing. Really actually don't act as so much as traffic calming device as like anger devices. If someone actually uses the traffic circle on the minority street. In the way it's intended, which is a slow approach and you keep moving. Um, many times they're they're honked at or ignored. Because people on the on the majority street, the dominant street. Fly through. So anyway, my question, I hope, and and without going through the math, that your um. New requirements create traffic calming. Traffic calming and enough deflection and enough slowing of speeds. To be a traffic calming device. So if either one of you want to say, yeah, I think they do, I would love to hear it.
Uh yeah, so I've got a couple thoughts and Edward may a- as well. Uh so I'll I'll say that uh. The majority of the traffic circles um prevalent in the the Whittier neighborhood. Were implemented long before modern roundabout uh standards sort of uh took root. Uh and started uh growing and popularity around the country. So I I can confidently say. That the thinking has significantly evolved of about how to um effectively implement traffic circles and uh what. Are sometimes referred to as many roundabouts uh to make sure that you're getting the proper deflection. Um and so I I I I can kind of say definitively that that's what these new set of standards are intended to do. I'm recalling um uh perhaps uh if not one, maybe even two tab bicycle tours with you, Mark. Where we talked about the uh uh the the way these are supposed to operate is that folks yield to the traffic that's in the circle. But uh the operation often is such that people are yielding to traffic that's not even in the uh the circulating roundabout uh itself. So um the the intent of this update is to have driver behavior function as you're noting.
Right, thank you. Okay, I'm done for now. Thank you.
The only thing I would add to it is that the challenge in these is always trying to retrofit something in without. A complete reconstruction of the intersection or something that is actually beyond the right of way that's in those intersections. If you were. Doing a true, you know, modern full roundabout with uh. The deflections as recommended through the design guidelines that are out, uh this would look very different. So there's definitely a. I'll say a merging of the different pieces, trying to come up with something that's realistic or reasonable to be able to put into these. So. Now the the deflection, if we were dirt not designing this as a modern roundabout, would be much more significant and would require significantly more land.
Okay, well, thanks. I I see there's others who have questions. I I have a couple I'd like to ask. And one of them is uh actually following up on the a topic that Sarah initiated. And that is how the city uh deals with uh. Private intrusion on city rice away in what might be regarded partly as a as a tree lawn. Or or maybe not. And I'm thinking particularly of uh the areas. Like Juniper and Calmia, where there's no sidewalks or gutters. But uh people, some people have started placing rocks and devices to prevent. People from parking on what is actually city right of way on those streets. And I just wondered how. How you're dealing with that and how these proposed standards would uh would deal with that.
So the short answer is these standards are really not applicable to that. This is about design standards. What can happen in the right of way and encroachments are regulated through Title Eight of the Boulder revised code. Which does allow certain uh landscape and other improvements to be done by private parties, but also prohibits other types of encroachments. Um so that's how those are managed in terms of a code perspective or regulatory perspective. Um it's laid out in Title Eight.
So as as far as I can tell. Uh that isn't being addressed by the city at all uh. Uh in terms of. Of of the issue that uh is actually in in the situation here.
And and I can say we have uh limited, if any proactive enforcement of right-of-way encroachments. It's usually complaint-based. In situations like that, uh we also have to look to determine is what they've done really part of landscaping. And was it truly designated as parking or was it something that's been occurring generically? And and therefore isn't necessarily appropriate to have parking or to use that ordinance to regulate, but. So definitely a separate issue from the DCS to the front of you tonight.
So so would this not even be considered as uh for for say new houses that are. Developing a new driveway and a new connection uh to the street and so on. None of that would cause the design and construction standards to be uh a part of the consideration.
The location of a new driveway would certainly have to comply with design and construction standard requirements for where those can be located. Um and of course, the ability for a new driveway is also regulated through Title Nine on access. Um so they would have to, from those perspectives, would not necessarily um modify. Landscape requirements or what landscape has been done by a homeowner that's allowed under Title Eight along the rest of the frontage.
Okay, thank you. Sarah.
Um thank you. Um I'm gonna quickly follow up on something Mark said and then ask the question I had. I'm I I'm gonna assume that the um roundabouts uh are not going to be like the roundabouts in Golden that are flat to the ground. And therefore very hard to see. Are they gonna continue to be uh whatever the dimensions are? Will they continue to be raised off the street or? Come up off the street?
Yes, I believe that would be the intention. And Garrett, did you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the ones in Golden that you're referencing, but uh it's desirable to have um vertical feature. Um uh in the central island um to create the visibility of the deflection and the the slowing of uh traffic speeds.
Okay, great. That's because the ones in Golden, I'm constantly like, oh crap, I just drove. Circle because you can't tell they're there. Okay, so my actual question is um about uh. Uh the tree placement in paved areas. It's a chapter three dot O three C three. And I kind I looked at this um language through the lens of the Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan. Um specifically um the the ba- the facts that um. The goal of the plan is no net loss of overall tree canopy by twenty thirty-seven and that um. Uh uh let's see, the um city managed trees provide about thirty-four percent of all canopy cover. So that's an important percentage of our canopy cover. So in the chapter three dot O three C three about tree placement in paved areas. Uh you talk about trees within tree grades not shall not be placed where the expected mature height or canopy spread obstructs site distance. Of any public sign, driveway, et cetera. So I have a concern that this means that literally any graded tree. Um along our major roads, I'm thinking like twenty-eighth and thirtieth will always be. Short, small trees that don't live very long and therefore don't provide very much. Uh tree canopy or shade for these areas that are very heavily urbanized. And I'm wondering, like, I I understand that the sentiment or the goal, which is to. Uh not have signage. Um blocked or um put cyclists and pedestrians at any risk. Um or cars for that matter, from cars coming out of driveways. But um. I just don't understand how we're going to get the kind of lush tree canopy in those highly urbanized area. With this regulation.
So two things I'd offer, at least two. The first would be uh this particular regulation actually isn't changing. And so. It's uh you know, what it would have been doing in terms of trees would be able to continue. This one is really about. Ensuring they're not placed too close to an intersection. So I I don't read it as it would prohibit large mature trees in many of those locations. Uh along that kind of frontage where you do have trees and grates. Keep in mind, those are fairly limited uh areas in terms of where that's allowed in the street sections. Trees and grates are not the the healthiest way to grow trees. Uh but this is trying to ensure you don't have them. Set too close to an intersection in particular as it relates to the site distance. So I don't see that it would prohibit. The ability to have proper maturing, larger canopy trees as is envisioned and required in the street tree section. Of Title Nine.
So I I guess I I appreciate what you're saying. But on a street like twenty-eighth street, there are driveways. As far as I can tell, you know, every twenty-five to fifty feet. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of driveways. Um and I just, so almost any tree, almost by definition, is going to, i- if 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 it's a. Tall tree or a thick tree or an old beautiful tree is likely to obstruct some sight lines. So I and I realize that you're trying to balance several different compelling goals for the city. But I'm I really, you you know, I for four and a half years been talking about um. Free-range trees. And this is another one of those situations where I'm concerned that the. That I I'm just concerned about this particular limitation um and what its impact might be on. Urban uh our ability to reduce reduce the heat island effect. And to provide a comfortable tree canopy in these very highly concretized areas. And is there, have you, is there any thought about? How we might. New make a new new uh. Slightly revise this language to create the opportunity for more tree canopy. I I I I don't have it, I don't have an opinion about how to do that. I just think this is problematic.
So I would say um probably we wouldn't recommend such. So when we talk about the balancing of goal, safety is gonna be the number one. And so to modify this to allow obstruction of site triangle or site distance would not be our recommendation. Um i- is that is directly related to safety. When you talk about the balancing of the goals, we would not see balancing the other pieces. You know, a negative impact of what has already been determined as minimum safety requirement for site distance. Um you're you're no no doubt right on twenty-eighth. I I'm sure this has impacted. What you have seen is that corridor has gone through. Updates uh because of the number of driveways, not necessarily the case in many spots, but there are locations along there. We would again not recommend doing something that would lessen the safety aspect by creating site distance problems.
So how do we, how do we address the urban heat island impact in that that part of town if we can't easily. Plant the kinds of um trees that will can mature to a significant. We're at a significant um height or rate.
But certainly the balancing of where trees besides along the streetscapes can go um as we look at. Redevelopment opportunities for things that come in along those corridors or those those particular properties. Not all of the the canopy. Requirements are gonna be met through street trees. It's gonna be a a portion, certainly, but a recognition not all of it can or will be for those reasons.
Well, maybe when we get to the, so. I'm wondering if when we get to the sidewalk uh um part of the review, which will come in some later phase. I I'd like to suggest that we think creatively about placement of sidewalks and the placement of tree lawns in those areas. That are, you know, um. Uh I'll just the de- the downtown areas and see if there's some opportunity to be creative. Um and put trees in the canopy as a top priority. That's I think that's all I can suggest, all I can say at this point, because. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to come up with some language to change this particular element, but I it does, it really does concern me.
Okay, uh excuse me, I uh we just uh so there's a mountain lion in our backyard. I have to go get the dogs in. So. Sarah, can you take over chairing for a few minutes, please?
Uh yes, of course.
Oh my God, John, never a better reason than that.
I appreciate that you gave us notice. Um that that and Sarah, do you mind if I pipe in to?
No, of course, please go ahead.
Um and and I ask this out of a, you know, vantage point of a fair amount of ignorance, right? Uh I'll see how long I can use the new guy uh excuse, but. Uh really a question to kind of frame this uh to Edward and anybody else. When we have individual site uh redevelopment. Uh number one, or when we are confronted with a redevelopment of a street uh as a city project, the CFP project. Widening, uh enhancing those types of things. Do we have minimum standards in those case for uh for landscaping? So minimum number of trees, that type of thing. In those circumstances, which we would be able to control.
We certainly do in terms of the requirements for street trees that are part of Title Nine. Um certainly in those projects, there is always some give and take and pull about how to to best do that to meet the different needs, the spacing of trees from. Side triangles, from uh water lines, all of those things. We work through that on a regular basis. Sometimes that may mean that if they can't get them in the actual planting strip. In order to still comply with that code, they're gonna have to place them behind the sidewalk in order to still meet that requirement. So yeah, you're absolutely right as projects come in. Um that is looked at um depending on the. The significance of the projects and it's triggering the requirement to be in compliance with the street tree section and Title Nine.
Uh that thanks for answering that and and Sarah's and others. I kind of put myself out there and asking that question because I didn't know the answer for Boulder, but. But that's very consistent with the the. Standard that I would expect of Boulder. So that's good to know that we have those requirements in place. And I think. That's really where we see the opportunity to make sure that the maximum. Canopy is put in place when redevelopment or or reconstruction of the street. As uh in as initiated by the city can take place. And then the other thing I heard, which again is is outside of the standards. But certainly a valid point is, what are we doing from a enforcement standpoint? Uh on new development and, you know, probably fairly ourselves when we do construction. To make sure that trees that are put in are are kept viable over time. And uh we can certainly look into that. My hope would be we've got some uh minimum warranty times and and some things like that. So hopefully that helps address some of those items.
Yeah, Brad, if I could just respond, I I I don't know what the um standards are for um viability, but my. Learned my observational experience in Boulder is that most of our graded trees are tiny. And they last about seven years and then they're gone. Um and you can drive down Pearls or walk down Pearl Street and see all the trees that have been, they may, they may be all all ashbore trees. I don't know, but all those trees. Pearl Street have been cut off. Um so it maybe that is an area to explore about perhaps. Requiring. Uh bigger um uh great graded trees, um creating more opportunity for more for sturdier trees. You know, et cetera, et cetera. That might be an an area worth exploring.
And I can actually tell you that that has been explored and is part of these changes. So a lot of what you see in those which are are older installations. Do not meet today what's proposed in here or even some of what we've been applying. Um because you're right, many of those that are heavily constrained, they do not contain the soil volume to support. Positive, strong tree growth. Um we have updated these standards. We have learned a lot in some of the more recent capital projects on some newer. Things like silver cells that provide greater uh growth, medium growth area for trees. Um so that that has been something forestry has helped a lot in that discussion about what's appropriate in here. Some of the new uh. Uh drawings actually even in Title Eleven start to address that further, whereas the there there was an older style out there that was, yeah, just put a. A little bitty grate in here and a trail grow just fine in it. And well, that's absolutely not the case. Um we have plenty of those around that, you know, will take. Decades, if not centuries, to replace as projects come along, but new stuff going in is looked at much differently than it used to be for those reasons.
Wonderful. That's great news and I will hand it back to John. Thank you very much. And you're muted.
The dog is still here, so we're okay. So Mark.
Yeah, um thanks, John. And so just to build on Sarah's uh concern for trees, which um. I I it made me this, going through this section of the DCS and talking about trees. Um made me think back to uh the Parks and Rec Department master plan that we. Unanimously recommended council with that. One of the things in that plan. That I was so impressed with was that the Parks and Rec staff took it upon themselves to state that the intent of the plan. And I I don't have the uh wording right here in front of me, was essentially to maximize the. Uh the public good and to serve the broadest range of people and to fulfill. Uh the city's climate and equity goals. So it was something along the lines of, well, sure. But but stating it upfront, I thought was was really um important. And I understand the DCS is a technical document. Um but I also think it's important to acknowledge what. The vision for Boulder is. And so in anyway, I'm doing some uh research. I came across the Seattle uh the Seattle Department of Transportation, their wording. I sent this in an email, but I think reading it as as just one paragraph is really important um to. to show what another department has done to preface their their um street trees vegetation requirements. And that is, street trees are required by municipal code and standards set by S dot designed to provide maximum public benefit and compatibility with other infrastructure in the street right of way. Street trees are to be protected during construction and otherwise managed directly or indirectly by S dot urban forestry for optimum health, longevity and public safety. S dot urban forestry, uh et cetera, et cetera. But then it closes with um uh to protect measures to preserve the functional, environmental, social and economic benefits of trees and to support the citywide urban forestry goals to increase canopy cover. It's like, well, there they they really put it out there. So anyway, if I had a a recommendation, it's that um our protection of trees and plants, the legislative intent, uh et cetera, is um pretty dry, really doesn't address kind of a broader range of goals and we can include climate uh in there along which is uh increased canopy cover again and growing healthy trees is part of reaching our climate goal. So anyway, I I would encourage that um a a consideration of of uh making our legislative intent more available to uh people who interact with our streets and and to the department as a whole.
Thank you. Uh, I think, Mark, uh, you may at the next phase of this meeting will be uh discussion among the board and development of our recommendation and that may be the time for you to propose language of that nature. So any other questions of staff at this point? Seeing none, I think we'll move. Oh, Mark, go ahead.
I I'm gonna ask um one more about street skates, uh and that is the DCS in in when we approved uh the site review of Diagonal Plaza. The street that was is created, which is now a parking lot, but we created the 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 development creates a street going from Twenty Eighth Street uh uh east west uh towards the other part of the development. But of course, that street can't really continue it turn, it reverts to a parking lot because the development only encompasses the western portion of that diagonal plaza. Thing. Anyway, when looking at that particular site review, uh I noted that the street, particularly on the north side of the of the development was wide. It was um kind of uninteresting. It was um it it didn't look like it was designed to manage speeds or a twenty mile per hour speed limit. And the developers' answer to my concerns was, hey, the DCS tells me to do this. This the the city tells me I I don't design the street for my development. The city tells me how to do this. The DCS tells me how to do this. Then I look at Thirty Fourth Street going um north, south from Valmont, uh a couple blocks in, which is now one of the most creative, interesting, cool streets. It's really, I had someone the other day call it a wooer. And my question is, does new changes to the DCS make a street like Thirty Fourth something that can be designed and done uh in conjunction with a development so that we don't end up with uh these with a new street that we subsequently say, wow, why did we design a street big and wide without any parked cars? It's uninteresting. And what do people do? They drive really fast on it. So now we're trying to do speed mitigation measures. So do you think your changes to the DCS allow for streets like Thirty Fourth and correct for streets, the new unnamed street uh on the north side of Diagonal Plaza?
These, so I, to be honest, these particular changes do not really change that scenario. Thirty Fourth was uh done through the TVAP and the area plan that prescribed additional or different street standards. Uh this phase of the DCS update was not looking at street cross sections or those street standards that likely can be a future phase. It is a fairly significant effort to take on. Um and so I don't don't have a feel for when that may occur.
I I I would just chime in to that. Um just as uh, I guess, context, I I I understand the desire to make sure that that the new streets that we're bringing into the transportation network are meeting our 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 broader city goals and uh transportation goals and sustainability and so forth. Um but I I did ask uh um our GIS folks, how many centerline miles of streets were added to the city inventory over the last five years? Um and we're at zero point seven miles. So not a lot.
Good to have that context. Okay, are are there any uh any other questions for staff? I presume you'll stick around during our discussion because there may be other issues that uh you can contribute on as well.
Unless you're dismissing me, I would suspect, yes, I will still be here.
All right, so uh I think now's the time when we'll uh conduct a public hearing. I'm not sure whether we have many members of the public here to contribute, but Brenda, would you like to uh take charge of this portion?
I am happy to. We have two members of the public who have joined us tonight. Um now would be the time to raise your hand if you would like to chime in on this public hearing. And we do have one hand up. Um and so if you are ready, Amanda, with the timer, we will go ahead and begin.
Can I have a timer window? Yay, yay, because I didn't have one last night. Okay, um, yeah. Let's see. Um with the discussion about trees, I guess I'm kind of concerned. I I don't know if you got my email and read it about seven, seven, oh, Circle Street or Circle Drive. It's up at the base of um Flagstaff where um baseline goes west and then turns ninety degrees uh, you know, on Flagstaff Road. And there's a lot of trees on that property. Um, if that house is going to truly be demolished, which I can't believe it's it it could be happening. It's an eight thousand square foot monolith. It's like, it's the only house that was there in nineteen forty one. You look at the historic pictures, you won't believe it. Um, and it's basically the same house. They put an entry thing on the front and added some stuff, but it's a Huntington Jones and Hunter House. It should have been landmarked. I don't know what happened, how this could have gone through L D R C and just been passed through for demolition. Eight thousand square feet. That's a huge carbon footprint. Um, it's on, you know, a considerable hill there where Christmas Tree Drive comes in. Um and there's a lot of trees there. There's this beautiful um treehouse between these two trees and another thing for kids to play on with tires and things between trees, a gazebo. Um, there's surface decks and it's all fireproof. There's not wood on the place hardly. And um it's it's a model house to have in Boulder, you know, as the best kept carbon footprint is using the one that's there. Um it's stunning to me that this could happen in Boulder. It's half the size of Dan Cruz's place at Twenty Second and Iris um which takes up a whole city block and is sixteen thousand square feet. Um, it's just obscene that this would be considered to be demolished. And I think that the planning board should be very concerned about such demolitions. Um I mean, there was a house in Floral Park that wanted thirty thousand dollars of windows because they have those ancient windows that are really cold and she's an artist in her studios there. And they kicked that to landmarks board. And then they breezed through seven seventy circle for demolition, straight through. Okay, couldn't find, um, you know, uh, what did they call it? Uh compatibility with historic value. Um, and I could see, I was counting windows and that's the first house I've seen. I've been going to L D R C for
Okay, Lynn.
And that's the first one I could see the house through the new house. It's been, you know, a lot's been reconstructed, but the original is there. How planning board could not concern themselves with something like this is astounding to me.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, do we have any other uh speakers in the public hearing?
I do not see any other hands up at this time. I'm just going to give a quick last call with a count of five. And I believe we are safe to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll uh bring it back to the board now for discussion. Thoughts on our recommendation to council? Don't make me call on folks. Mark, you had some suggestions. I know that maybe now's the time to talk about it most suitably. Would you like to?
I'm sure, John, thank you. I I I guess um I I don't want to um delve back into the minutia of sightlines. I I think my my views are known to staff and the board that that uh either some of the designs that are being implemented don't meet the sightline requirements or the sightline requirements are deficient. So but I don't think that that we're going to solve solve that tonight. I think the only thing that I can um uh really recommend would be to the uh uh street tree language that it be um that it address the uh the idea of the greatest good for the community and that that should drive the, whether it's tree selection, treatments, great size, et cetera. And that and that the that an equity and climate uh mention. Because trees, you know, we 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 have uh inequities in trees in their in their location. We have inequities uh in in vegetation and how streets are addressed. And we have deficiencies in how we use trees to meet our climate goals. So I would uh, I don't have motion language. I didn't come with that tonight, but I would um uh make a point that uh barring a some legal prohibition on that under under the intent that we should uh that particularly on our on our tree canopy and vegetation requirements that they should be um have an aspirational or goal oriented component.
Well, that very interesting. M L.
Um, yes, I absolutely concur with with Mark. I actually had a note that I overlooked wondering what it would look like. And I think that the appropriate place for this kind of thing would be under the legislative intent in six dash six, because that is chapter six, protection of trees and plants. And um it talks, it talks about the purposes to protect um health, safety and welfare by protecting trees, but it doesn't talk about the trees um i- in anymore, kind of the way Mark described. And I think that I I think we can't put it in enough places to keep reminding us. And I love the um the legislative introduction that Mark read in the um, I think it was Seattle, Seattle's. I feel like we need something in our legislative intent in six dash six that acknowledges that um trees are are critical for a a lot of very specific kinds of things, you know. Uh Sarah's talked about the tree canopy and the the street trees and um I think life safety is one thing, but I think about resilience and kind of long term livability is critical as well. And we need to find the language, I think, to um not undermine and overlook the fact that trees um play a significant role that really isn't articulated as as such beyond life, safety and well being for humans. Um, they play a big role in our climate and I I would look for language as well.
Laura.
So um I love trees too and and recognize all of the the good things that they bring to our city and how important they are. Uh, you know, for heat, for for public welfare, it just for the feel of of being in a a city like ours. You know, I think about cities in the desert that don't have any kind of tree canopy and how canopy and how impoverished that makes the city feel. So I guess I would like to ask Edward, you know, do we need a motion or a recommendation on this or is would it be in in his opinion, as someone who deals with the the um designing construction standards? Would it be appropriate to add language like that? Would it be uh an obstacle? Like, what what does he think about that? Like, where it would go and whether that Seattle uh language is a good model?
Sure, and I can start to address that. I'm not sure if Hella or Brad would want to add anything. They may not. Um, in general, I would say it's probably appropriate to consider whether there's something to add to six, six, one in the B R C, which is the legislative intent. We have really refrained from doing that type of thing in the DCS, which is truly designed to be a very specific technical requirements document. Um, and so I don't know that it would uh be something I would consider as appropriate in there. Um, and doesn't necessarily have the same wide ranging impact or effect that I think you're looking for that would be more appropriate in the Boulder revised code. Keeping in mind that DCS is really about the design standards of public infrastructure, including public landscaping. And I think what you're getting at is a it it potentially an intent larger than that.
And can this project modify the um Boulder revised code in that way? Or would that be, need to happen in a separate um scenario?
I would say it's certainly within the planning board's purview to make recommendations for such. Um, we would have to work on how we would then draft that for council to see as part of their uh the package that they see. Um, I don't anticipate that we would have significant concern there, although without seeing the specific language and ensuring that our legal staff especially is okay with it. I probably should be careful about saying that um and how it could be presented. But certainly within the purview of recommendations, although I would note that particular section is not something that we we proposed any modifications for, but that doesn't mean that you can't do that now.
Thank you, uh Edward. And you had invited a couple of other staff members, including Hella and I think potentially Brad to to weigh in. So I would invite them to respond if they'd like.
I don't have anything to add. I I confess to lacking enough context to have a have a full opinion on that.
And I appreciate you for saying that and not just making something up because some people would have. So thank you, Brad. Hell, I see you went off mic too.
Yeah, um, I would say that the legislative intent section um should be consistent with the city's authority to regulate for the city's health and welfare. And I think the goals that I expressed are within that um area that can be regulated. Legislative intent is also used to interpret the standards that are being um adopted underneath the legislative intent. So I would encourage that there is a match between what the legislative intentions and the scope and goals of the standards that the intent is um addressing.
So, Hella, just to clarify, you if I understood you correctly, you you do think it it could be reasonable to have that additional language in here as long as it's correctly phrased and placed?
Yeah, I think also you should think about what the particular standards address and are intended to address. Yeah, I think also you should think about what the particular standards addressed and are intended to address and whether. Whether that's what the intent states or does it have a much broader purpose? Um. I, I think it, it should be matched to. What are actual, actual regulations and their intent is. If that makes sense, and I haven't reviewed both chapter six and the D C S. Um, during the meeting to determine. What is in all of those? Sections that are within those chapters. And, and what language might be considered by the board, but I'm, I'm just. Um, suggesting that. You don't add intent language that. It's not something that the standards really address. And maybe if standards are amended at some point in time to also address those, then at that point in time, it would be appropriate to add those standards in.
Okay, thank you.
So if I understand correctly, Hella, you're basically saying, let's not write an intent where there's nothing that implements that intent. So we have to look at what we've got that's implementing language and make sure that the intent matches that. And if we want to have an intent that goes beyond the standards that we have. That would implement it. That, that might need to be a future update where it says a package that you have the intent and the standards that implement it. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so that, that there's a logical connection and it doesn't create confusion or ambiguity.
Thank you.
Mark.
Um, I was, I was just thinking about examples of this, and I know that we're, we're getting into a kind of a fuzzy area here, but I, I, when I look at. Our site review criteria. The, uh, under purpose, the very first sentence is the purpose of site review, which is a very technical, uh, thing. The purpose of site review is to allow flexibility and encourage innovation and land use development. And it goes on from there, uh, using words like improve the character and quality of new development. Facilitate adequate economical provision of streets. I'm just using that as an example of a technical document that it begins with. Um, under purpose, uh, some, some, uh, subjective. And aspirational, uh, requirement. So. That's my example.
Sarah.
Um, I'm just wondering if we might, um, what I'd like Hella's. Legal re- reaction to this under six, six, one, A. If we were to add. Just a, a phrase. Um, that would read, um, so the purpose of this chapter is to protect blah, 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 blah. And to advance the goals. Of the Boulder Urbans Forest Strategic Plan, including no net loss of overall tree canopy by twenty thirty seven. So that, that's language that comes directly from a plan. Um, a- and I'm wondering how, how would something like that, um. Fall on legal ears?
I think that, I think I could be okay to add just, um. Looking at that chapter right now because it does regulate, um. And limit removal of trees within the public right of way. It's very broad language considering that this chapter. I think. Mostly addresses, well, actually at this. It addresses right of way and private property, I believe. It's, um, it's, it's difficult to. To give an opinion without having read the entire chapter, um, but, but generally. I think there are things in that chapter that are consistent with that goal and, and would achieve it. So. I think. That would be supportable because of that.
Okay, and just at the, at the risk of, um. Uh, rejecting my own suggestion, I, I would raise one. Concern, which is. The str- the Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan could change in ten years. And then we'd have this language that would need to be re, um. Reexamine. So I can see a downside to including that kind of language as well. So.
I, I have to say that I, uh, we all get a chance to, to respond. I, I personally think the language is innocuous enough that. It. It's unlikely to cause problems even with a change in the forestry, uh. Management plans. But that's one man's opinion. Laura.
I'm, I'm really appreciating this conversation and I want to go to like the intent. I think, I think the planning board's intent is clear, which is to support. Um, you know, the urban forestry goals in, in Boulder and support the development of that canopy. Where it intersects with designing construction standards, where it intersects with the Boulder Revised Code. And it seems like the, the actual construction of what that looks like, how that gets inserted. Is somewhat complicated and nuanced. And I would hate for us to kind of try to write something off the cuff without being able to do a deep dive into how does it relate to other things and, you know. How these kinds of things are typically constructed, but I would be supportive of a recommendation. For staff to take a look at this, keeping in mind what we have expressed tonight in terms of our intent and the kinds of suggestions that we've made and to try to add something. But I, I would hate to try to wordsmith it tonight. Cause I feel like I'm coming from a, a place of not being well educated enough to know whether it's, what I'm doing is gonna have, uh, unforeseen repercussions.
Okay. Lisa.
Yeah, um, so I kind of agree that the language is. Pretty innocuous, um, you know, as, as you used, as you described it, John, um. So unless we, we hear, you know, something else from staff or something more concerning, I. I'm not overly concerned about putting in. I do not, I don't see a lot of. Negative fallout or vulnerability there. So I just wanted to weigh in and say that.
So. Well, why don't we, uh, get a staff response to, uh, to Laura's suggestion about, uh. Drafting, having heard our comments. Drafting, uh, uh. Responding to them and giving us. A chance in our next meeting, which is next week. To, uh, formally approve it.
Certainly within your purview to do such, I'd have to look to understand what could be the implications to the current schedule, um, in terms of getting things in front of council. Um, may, may throw that off. Um, I know I personally would not be present for your meeting next week. I will be out of town. Um, but again, if that's your desire, your, your, uh, the pleasure, I think it's certainly within your ability to do such.
So, yeah, so I'm sending some language to Hella and Amanda right now. Which would be a recommendation to council. This would, this could, we could vote on this tonight because it's just a recommendation to council. To consider adding language to six, six, one, A, that would establish. Uh, or establish probably is the wrong word, implementation, uh. Would, um, would. Would, um, would, uh, add. To, uh, this section, the goal of implementation of the Boulder Urban Strategic, Boulder, uh. Urban Forest. I'm doing this on the fly. Forest Strategic Plan, including the plan's goal of no net loss of overall tree canopy by twenty thirty seven. So it's just a recommendation and then council can take up discussion. Rather than us trying to change the language, it's, it, it opens up the possibility of council discussing it, staff looking at it, council discussing it and. Either saying no, we'll come back to that some, uh, future dates. Or. Um. So I just sent it to Amanda and to Hella.
Okay, well, while we're getting their reaction, I, I see Laura has her head up, yeah.
Uh, could we add to that? Or perhaps it is simply understood that staff could have an alternate proposal to meet the same intent? If they think there's a better way to do it? Maybe it's simply understood that if staff doesn't agree with the planning board's recommendation, they might come with an alternate suggestion, but. I would like to leave the door open to staff saying there, there might be a better way to phrase this or a better place to put it.
Yeah. M L.
Uh, thank you, John. Um. I'm kind of following what Laura is saying that. It seems that if we, if we approve the motion tonight. And we add. Um, a suggestion that. Um, that staff. Look into. Um. Enhancing that legislative intent. To provide, uh, a reference. To. Um, the tree. Um, canopy in particular. And so when city council. Takes this up at their meetings. That there is. They look at it with already some language that, uh, staff brings. To incorporate that potential into it, you know, rather than the council having. Not having anything from us, um. And, you know, just kind of taking it up on, uh, in their own conversation, but if staff could come to the council with. Here is what might work to. And, and I guess our direction tonight would be. What considerations do we feel are lacking in that legislative intent in six dash six that, uh, might be appropriate to include?
Brad.
I want to defer to. Edward, um. Is really the, the case sponsor for this. Uh, but just to frame it maybe a little bit, I, I appreciate the board. Acknowledging the challenges of trying to, uh, craft language on the spot. Um. I, I do think I hear kind of the intent and, and maybe framing a motion in that regard. Uh, with the trust that we would give our best effort to reflect that and that some specific suggested language. Um, is what I'm hearing. Uh, so I, I guess I'm, I'm framing it just to make sure, confirming what I'm hearing and then kind of a pass off. Uh, look towards Edwards, uh, uh, whether that, um. Uh, it is prac- both practical and, um, something that we can successfully convey.
Certainly, and I, I thank you, Brad, for that. And I think it is, you know, we'd want to make sure we involve our partners in forestry and, and urban parks. Um, since this is something that's near and dear to them and is, is their master plan. Um, and, you know, we would look at how to best craft the language. I'd want to work very closely with Hella on that. Um, not sure that, that we have other places where we actually reference specific. Master plans, so we may want to look at something a little bit, uh, different than that, if that was some amenable to the board or if your. Your recommendation was large enough or open enough for us to look at that so that we could, could craft something that, uh, would be. Reasonable in there, but yes, I think we could do that.
Hella may have some wisdom for us.
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty standard for the board to give some. General direction and then. And proposing that staff work with that to add some language in that, in, to an ordinance or a plan or wherever it might come up in a legislative item. Um. It, it sounds like Edward is comfortable with that. It's always up to staff whether or not they want to propose that to city council. I want to add. Language to it, but city council will also see. What your ask or recommendation was and typically asks what, whether staff implemented it and if, if not, why not? So there's, there's typically follow up on all of that.
So if, if we were to recommend that, uh, staff include some explicit reference to the. Urban Forestry Master Plan in. In the statement of intent. Uh. You feel that would be, uh, both appropriate and, and sufficient to get our concerns across? Do I understand that?
Yes.
I think so. My, my one caveat would be it may, it may not necessarily be a direction to staff as much as a. A direction and a recommendation and then staff can work on that. Do you want to respect the lines of, uh, really you're making recommendations to the council and not necessarily. Direction to staff in terms of the roles, but we, we understand what your intent is there and we would. Want to have that language because we, uh, would agree with you, wouldn't want to just put it in front of council without anything that's been worked through and say. Here, in the middle of your hearing, figure out this language, just as you're struggling with that now. They would also, so I, I think we can work with that.
Okay, thank you. So any further thoughts on the board?
Just maybe an ask to Hella to help us craft up what that language might look like for when we're doing a motion? If that is okay with you, Mark, since you're, Mark and Sarah, since you've been sort of the main champions for this.
And why, why don't we just put up what was sent over to Amanda? If you could put that up and then Hella can give us feedback on.
Yeah, I'll share my screen here with what I have. Um. Okay, you all see this okay?
Yeah.
Um, this was the, uh, original, um. Suggested motion language and then. What, um, Sarah had sent over. So.
Not the most grammatically artful. You know. But I think it gets the. The idea across. Or just how about to consider language, just get rid of the first adding. The, that, yeah, that, right there. And then, because then I've add later on that would add to this section, the goal of.
I would say, I would say to include language that, uh, blah, blah, but, uh, which is a little bit more. Direct, but, uh. Otherwise.
I think, don't. I think, I, I, I always am under the impression that we are making a. While we're, it says recommendation. So, yeah, include is fine too, if that's something that staff is comfortable with.
I think it's. I think there's a little difference in how strong the language is if you recommend to consider it or if you actually recommend to include it. So. I do think there's a difference and you could. Do it either way, depending on, on, on what. But the position of the board is on that. Um, one, one thought would be to add behind six, one, uh, six, six, one, A. Legislative and comma legislative intent, comma, um, to make it. Clear in that. Sentence. What type of section you're talking about?
Wonder. If. It, it would be, uh. Simpler to say. To. Add language to six, 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 one, A legislative intent. Um, that. To include. The, um, implement to include implementation of the Boulder Urban, Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan. The city's climate goals. And equity goals. So that we, we, we refer to the three. You know, we have, the city has an adopted formalized equity plan. The city has an adopted. Formalized climate action plan. And we have an adopted, uh, urban forest strategic plan. And that the. Uh, that if you, if staff through careful wording. Uses six dash six dash one, A legislative intent. To reference those that. Everything that follows. Is about, um. Is how we, uh. Align. Our, uh, tree canopy and streetscape with. Um, street landscaping with already adopted, uh, plans.
Amanda, just so we can catch up to what Mark was saying. Um, I would delete what you just added. It's to include language in six. Six dash six dash one, A. That would add to the section, the goal of implementation of Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan, keep all that the same. Comma, the city's climate. Action plan. Comma. And the city's, what was it, Mark? Equity goals?
Yeah, um, we have, uh, maybe someone on staff who, uh, can remember the title of our equity. Yeah, um we have uh maybe someone on staff who uh can remember the title of our equity.
There's a racial equity plan, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so and the city's racial equity plan. And then you'd have to move that last clause about including the plan's goal, you'd have to cut and paste that last clause. All the way to the end, yeah, cut and paste that after. Boulders or for a strategic plan, like put it in parentheses there. And then comma, yeah, after the parentheses.
I think the cities um. I'm not sure if they have the climate action plan or if it's the city's climate initiatives. I don't know what the formal.
I think initiative is correct.
Yeah. And I don't know that it's a plan, but the city's climate initiatives, initiative.
And then you delete the word plan there.
I don't think the plan is in there. Then you look them up.
Okay.
Does that all fit in legislative intent? Because this is all about trees, so do trees implement the racial equity plan?
I I think what are um again, like like the Parks and Rec plan. Where it's kind of like, well, gee, doesn't, you know, how do we, how does that affect racial equity? And I think I think that that department was really um. Out in front of how to make their long term plan align with the racial equity plan and acknowledging. That or or acknowledging that there are uh, I don't want to say failures, but there there are shortcomings in in implementation currently.
I I agree with that, but I I feel like. These things are broader than just sex chapter six, protection of trees and plants, right, like. I just don't know that that's the right place for us to be declaring an intent to implement the city's climate initiatives and the city's racial equity plan, those are. Broader to me than just, why is it stuck under chapter six, protection of trees and plants, and why isn't it a bigger umbrella thing that applies to everything?
Well, we could, we could actually go to the uh page one of the DCS and. Put them there.
Well, this is, this is about the Boulder revised code, not about the DCS, right, where we are right now with six dash six dash one. I just, I just hate to be wordsmithing something like this, when when we don't have the big picture like Hella was talking about, like. Sorry, go ahead, Brad.
You're muted, Brad.
Sorry, mine's more procedural, so I can wait till this line of discussion ends.
Brad, were you, were you?
I I do have a couple other thoughts uh when you're ready, but I don't want to step on your toes.
Well, I'll just insert it then, um. Uh just briefly, I think before the parentheses that comma probably isn't intended. But to just tie these together to a single motion, and I'm going to leave out some words, but it's basically. Motion to recommend approval of the standards and code. At at the end of plants, I think then it's comma. And to include blah blah blah. So that you've got a cohesive motion there, just a recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Um I'm gonna uh agree with Laura, and I I mean, I I really appreciate what um Mark's trying to do. But I think I'm gonna agree with Laura that um limb, I think um keeping it small rather than making it. Super big, um because we can always, the city can always come back and revisit this. And of course, we don't even know if council will accept it or not, but um and just stick with the implementation of the. Uh Forest Service Plan component of this new language, because chapter six. Is about protection of trees and plants, it's um and and I I do appreciate the equity lens. Um and the climate lens, but I. This is just my my take on this, I feel like we'd be adding an awful lot to something that we're not, that the staff. Hasn't looked at at all, whereas the Boulder urban forest strategic plan is part of, has been part of their analysis. Of the of the work we're looking at today. So that's just my take on it.
Okay, I I see Hella might have a comment uh also on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say I could go through the different sections in chapter six six. With you so that you get an idea of what type of regulations are in there. Um so the first one is the legislative intent, the second section is um called removal of dead diseased and dangerous trees. And it allows the city manager to require removal of the diseased or dangerous trees that. Cause a risk within the city of private property owners. Then the next section, the city manager will supervise planting and it. It basically regulates that that any planting that occurs in the city right of way is supervised by the city manager. Um planting in public areas, six six four, no person shall plant in or remove. From any city property, any plant or tree without obtaining first permission from the manager to do so. Then it has requirements that if you're working in the right of way, you get a right of way permit. You also need the design and construction standards. Then there's a section on spraying and pruning and it requires that on city property. Before you do any of those things, you have to get the permission of the city manager. Then there's a general prohibition section of. No person shall be allowed to remove damage or destroy any tree or plant growing on city property or right of way. Without first having obtained permission from the city manager, again, permit requirements have to be complied with. Um there's some regulations about what you might attach to a tree. And then there's a requirement that no person shall remove or destroy a tree in the public right of way without first having a plan approved. And the plan then, there's requirements, what that plan has to look like, that there has to be replacement trees or other med- other mitigation. Um that makes up for that loss. And the last one is to authorize rules. Uh that the city manager can issue to implement the requirements of the sec- section, so it's really mostly addressing. What can happen to landscaping and the city right of way on city property and then it addresses. Kind of dangerous or disease situations on private property.
Does does have in six six four. Uh see, the planting, maintaining, relocating or removing of any tree or plant. Located with a public right of way or public easement shall conform with the standards of the city of Boulders Design and Construction Standards. That seems to me like the location, the the way in which what we're thinking about intersects with. Uh what Edward has um put before us tonight. Um and and maybe it's not necess- maybe it's not necessary to include this, um but that's where I see the intersection, I don't know. You see it there.
Um I think there is an intense section and I think that can be expanded. Here.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't suggesting moving it from the intent section, I'm. Going back and forth about the inclusion of it at all in the intent section. And I just see the intersection of this thought with six six four.
The DCS, yeah. No, yeah, I agree, I re- I agree with you on that, I I just wanted to give the context of. What's within this chapter and what what does it actually address as you consider what you want to add. The intent section to state. Because the intent describes what the intent is behind the regulations that I just described.
Yeah, that then I, I'm sorry to interrupt, I that then I I would say that I fulfill more strongly that the. Climate initiatives and racial equity plan probably don't apply here. In the specific sense, obviously they do in the overarching, the direction the city's going sense.
Hey, I see uh Edward has uh some thoughts on this.
Yeah, a few thoughts, this is kind of expanded beyond what I said earlier in terms of what we might be comfortable and I. Now, thank you, Hella, for going through what's in that section and trying to tie back to, you know, the intent should be met within the goals. I also would express some concern of starting to list a number of plans that to be adopted into the Boulder Revised Code. As a legislative versus those plans that have been adopted and are in use, I don't believe we have uh. Other circumstances where we're necessarily doing that per title, my preference would be. For us to have the ability to look at, you know, are there appropriate goals, which I think you've already identified in terms of the protection. Of and known that loss of tree canopy and trying to add some of that to the legislative intent, I think is very much doable. Trying to bring in a number of plans just by reference, I don't don't know really achieves. A great goal here, and I'm a lot less comfortable with the ability of staff to. Draft that language in a way that may or may not represent your intent here, so appreciate, you know, the getting a little bit. More specific rather than a larger to those, and that will help us in drafting language to meet what your. Desire is for council to consider.
Thank you. ML.
Uh I I think I'm in agreement with with uh reducing the. Uh the references, oops. It got shrunk, okay, um and. Uh you know, to the parts of the B- Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan, that makes sense, I don't know if the. Net loss of overall tree canopy would be the only one that is applicable in this section, but I'm I'm hearing that the. Purpose of what we're adding to the motion is um. Some thinking that staff could then pursue in a very specific kind of a way. Um so that council can say, okay, we might be desiring to have a. More intent in our um. In our, that just in in the legislative intent of the six dash six, so I. I kind of like less over more, I'm in agreement with all that, and I think that. I don't know if the tree canopy is the only part of the Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan that we would. Think is relevant or not, I'm not sure about that, but I think the Boulder Urban Forest Strategic Plan is a logical. One that would have um. That would have the uh. Um purpose. Similar to what six dash six is is going for.
Okay, Laura.
Can I make a language suggestion, please?
Sure.
Amanda, can you copy and paste that whole section? And and then we'll work on it, so we don't lose what we have here, I don't want to, I don't want to delete it, but let's try a new a new one. So I, okay, so now in the second version here, can you delete everything after six dash six dash one A? Legislative intent, so after a legislative intent. And here's what I would propose. Include language in six dash six dash one A legislative intent, comma. As proposed by staff. That supports. The health and maintenance of Boulder's urban forest canopy. And then I would look to staff to propose exactly what that language is that could be added. When they go to city council to have a proposal for what they would add that would support the health and maintenance of Boulder's urban forest canopy. Or health and growth, or whatever words we want to use there, maybe we don't want to just maintain it, maybe we want to grow it.
Let's make it the health of.
Okay, the health of.
Uh I'm I'm a little confused, um. So you've got the language staff gave us, and then it says, and to include language to. Six dash six dash one A comma legislative intent intent comma.
I would say to include.
What is that supposed to mean?
Sorry, I would say include, I would say include language in. Include language in six dash six dash one A.
Okay, yeah, it's just a preposition issue, okay, so motion against the city council approval of. Uh and to include language in six dash six dash one A. Comma legislative intent, um as proposed, that that supports the. Health of Boulder's urban forest canopy, I mean, I think. I like what you've done here, I agree with striking the stuff above. And I sort of wonder what we're saying. That's new, I don't know, I mean, if if this is a compromise that makes people happy, I think I'm I'm totally cool that I can vote for that, I can't. I I don't feel comfortable putting all the other plans in, not because I don't like them, I love them, but I don't think they belong here, um. But I think in adding this, I'm just not sure, I mean, staff cares about the urban forest canopy already, like. I don't know, I I I I could do without it, I could also accept it if that's a compromise, we need to to get something we can vote on.
Mark.
I'm I've uh. I I actually, I shouldn't have raised my hand, I'm I'm. I would be fine with this second motion that Laura just drafted. I'm fine with the first motion that references the Boulder or urban forest strategic plan. But not the other excluding the the plans of the racial equity plan and the climate initiative. Um I I, the final alternative would be for staff to say, hey, you know what, we hear you. We get it, give us a day and we we want, we will change the wording in six dash six dash one. Uh legislative intent, we'll come up with something that is more inclusive. And more uh aspirational than the language that exists there today. And we can say, hey, we heard you, board.
And I would say we definitely are hearing you, I would suggest one change to this rather than as proposed by, since we haven't proposed something yet. To say to be developed by or prepared by.
I think just for scheduling purposes, unless staff requests that we send it back to them. My um bias would be toward going ahead and just passing it rather than kind of. Kicking a ball back, um but you know, if you guys say, oh, you know what, actually, we want to go work on it, we will bring it back, kick it back to us, that's fine, but. Um I think my bias is toward voting on a motion and kind of advancing it.
I agree, I don't need to see it again, I would trust staff to develop something that meets our intent and and take it to council.
I I would like to add one one thought, um. To the last sentence or to the last line. Um that supports the health of Boulders, I think what we read in what six dash six is all about the health. And I'm wondering if we want to add back in supports the health and growth. Because the growth is really what is going to inches toward a. A higher degree of sustainability and higher degree of heat island mitigation, I mean. That's going to start changing kind of the needle on what's already there, I I appreciate six dash six for what it's doing. To um to take care of the health issues. I think maybe we're talking about um. Growth, I don't know, I would suggest that we add growth as a component, because I think health is is pretty well covered.
If we're going to do that, I wouldn't say growth, I I know I suggested that, but growth can also just mean like the trees, they're growing. Rather than expansion of the size of the canopy, so maybe expansion is a better word than growth.
I like that.
Okay.
All right, sounds good, uh should we make a motion?
Yes, that's what is about to happen here. Uh who would like to make a motion here? Sarah, you started out composing this.
Okay, um uh make a motion to recommend to this uh city council approval of the updated design and construction standards. Boulder Revised Code nine dash seven dash seven site triangles and Boulder Revised Code. Six dash six, protection of trees and plants, and to include language in six dash six dash one A legislative. Legislative intent to be prepared by staff that supports the health and expansion of Boulder's urban forest canopy.
I second that motion.
Very good. Any comments? I think we'll take a vote, and uh I think we have to. Do we have to do a roll call on this? Sarah?
Hi.
ML?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
George? And I vote I. We adopt that unanimously. Congratulations. And thank you, Mark, for for bringing that to everyone's attention clearly.
Sure, thank sure.
Okay, it's now eight thirty. We have one more fairly short item tonight and then some matters. I propose we take a ten minute break and come back at eight forty two. Okay. Let's see. We're almost all back.
John, that was so scary about the mountain lion in your yard. I'm really glad your dog's okay.
Yeah, that was a bit of excitement there.
I'll bet.
The neighbor just texted while we were in the meeting, so I figured I better respond.
Yeah, it's important.
We haven't seen. You could put a little tuna fish.
We haven't seen mountain lions in our yard. We've had bobcats and bears for sure, but no lions yet.
No.
I saw a tail disappearing once in the mountains and that's the closest I've gotten, but I knew of. I'm sure I've been much closer and didn't know, but.
Yeah.
One of my neighbors had one in her tree. Just down the street.
All right, let's get back in motion here. And I think the next item is an information item that staff will tell us about. So Edward, whenever you're ready.
Certainly. So this is just an information item regarding vacation of a portion of, I believe this is access easement. We were required by the charter to inform the board when something of this nature is happening, which will be going to council here next month. If there are questions, certainly let us know. Otherwise, no actions necessary from the board tonight, just really for your FYI about something going to council here soon.
Any questions? I have one. I went out there yesterday and and looked and it seemed to me that what's being proposed is, you know, fairly small, but the reason it's being proposed is because there's this building nearby is to be expanded. And does that otherwise require any special variances or changes that would otherwise be unnecessary? If if this isn't done?
I'm not necessarily from that perspective. This project has gone through administrative review for the modifications that they want to make. The the vacation of that doesn't necessarily directly impact how that administrative review or the outcome of it. It if this was not to be vacated, it would prohibit part of what they want to expand because they couldn't couldn't, of course, encroach into this. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, yes, it does. I mean, I I went there on my bike and I saw that that tree that exist, the new tree that exists there now is going to have to be trimmed quite a bit to accommodate their request. But otherwise I don't see any big problem with it, so. Anyway, just had to ask.
Certainly.
I don't intend to 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 make any specific comment about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And that concludes the the issues that we have on our agenda for today. There were, I think we'll move to matters from from staff first. Depending on who's still with us.
I'm sorry, did you ask for staff matters at this point?
Yes.
Sure. I wanted to first of all acknowledge and really express appreciation and celebration for the great retreat you all had. I know they were already with some email expressed afterwards. And and that's a little bit in 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 the past now. But I was honored to be at the first of these with you all. And just excited to hear the engagement on everybody's part and I think very constructive conversations. Charles is obviously not on on today's call and meeting. But I do know from a little bit of email traffic, I saw that there is planned reporting out and follow up. But I just want to express my deep appreciation. And the simple congratulations on on finding a date to me. And the help from Amanda in that regard. So thank you so much to all of you.
All right, I do. And matters from the board. Any issues? I think there may be a couple that I've heard that Mark, I I nail him as soon as he has food in his mouth, of course.
Which on it actually, it looks like Amanda might have had matters from staff.
Sorry, I just had one quick comment to add just to give you all a heads up. I have hired a new board specialist that starts next week. So I hope, I mean, it'll only be his second day on the job, but hopefully he will be joining us next week and I can introduce you to him all and start training him and you'll see a a new face here. That's all.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
That'll be interesting. Okay. Let's see. And Mark, were you ready to talk now?
Sure, always ready to talk, right, Tom? John and I had an opportunity on the affordable housing bike tour, which was actually really super informative and fun. And if anyone ever wants to do that, you can contact Jay and he's happy to arrange another time for that. So and we had one member participate via car, via truck, actually. So anyway, you you can you can do that and contact Jay. I highly encourage it. Anyway, John and I riding home had an opportunity to debrief just a little bit on regard to the retreat. And and as I expressed in a little bit in an email, my only regret or a consideration in regard to the retreat was we didn't get a chance to interact in a way that was very retreat-like. When I say we, the board and have um, an opportunity rather than addressing agenda items to address how we operate as a board, goals, aspirations, frustrations, whatever. And so the question is do we as a board want to have an opportunity to have a retreat that is not a training, but is rather a a little more of a touchy feely board retreat, whether it's facilitated by whether we have a facilitate facilitator or it's it's just us with a few staff members, whatever it might be. Obviously would have an agenda and so forth. But anyway, my my question is to board members, having not had much time to think about this. Is that something that you're interested in or in fact would dearly like to avoid?
I have a thought about that and I think we talked about this in some kind of a casual broadway when we were talking about having the training at the retreat, but what about the idea that we use time in matters on days when we don't have a very packed agenda to raise and explore a topic? One of the things that I have been doing is meeting conversing with the climate initiatives folks. And I was thinking it would be nice if they I was thinking it would be nice if they would do a presentation to planning board, just to bring us up to speed on what they're thinking, what they're doing, what they're enrolling, those sorts of things. So, you know, a couple, that's just an idea, but the idea that we use um the matters time to bring the discussions forward that we're interested in having um as a board, rather than trying to get another retreat organized.
Laura.
So I relate to what both Mark and ML are saying. So ML, I agree. I I think it's a good idea to use the matters section to talk about um content, you know, uh subject matter that we don't have time to talk about in the board meetings. And I think the suggestion was made previously that there could be educational pieces, like get us up to speed on Boulder's Affordable Housing Program, or get us up to speed on on the Boulder urban forestry plan that I don't, I haven't read, don't know much about. Um so I I think those kinds of things would be nice to have in matters. Um I also relate to what Mark is saying about how that was one thing that I didn't say in terms of the plus delta exercise we did with Morrow, but I thought about it like five minutes after walking out of the room, you know, that I did wish that we had had space in the retreat to have some of the conversations that Morrow was recommending that we have, like the conversation about do people want um the meetings to be facilitated in a way that really focuses on efficiency? Or do people like having the space for, you know, John, to let us meander a little bit? And I expect that we may have some differences in how we interpret that, and it might be good to actually have that conversation that Morrow recommended that we have. Or how we apply some of the tools that Morrow recommended, like the tool about um uh going through certain things, item by item, with each person commenting on just one item at a time, rather than each person gives a laundry laundry list, and then we try to summarize and come back to the important things. So I I I do think, and and I'll go beyond that. There were things that we did not discuss in the treat- the retreat that are kind of what Mark is talking about of what a typical board does to look at its own process and talk about how it could make adjustments and work together better. You know, I have um had conversations, for example, with city council members where they talk about planning board's relationship with staff, or how a recommendation that we as planning board made and how that landed with city council and kind of put them in a certain position that I think would be good for us to talk about and think about. You know, our role is not to be a rubber stamp. But when we do go against staff's advice, or when we do go against city councils' recommendations, that that means something. And so how we frame it and how we think about our role, I think, in that regard, and how we function within the city is something that we could have a conversation about. Again, I I absolutely am not here to be a rubber stamp and just never make waves. I am gonna make waves at certain points, but I do think we should talk about how we're doing that um together as board. So in in short, I'm in favor. I would make time for for what Mark is suggesting.
Lisa.
Um yeah, so I agree. Um I think with what ML said about, you know, one, bringing certain topics forward. I think one that I I just have been noodling around in my mind that other board members or staff may or may not think is something we're talking about, but I um noticed a couple headlines about uh declining enrollment in BVSD. Uh we have fewer and fewer families and fewer and fewer children uh in Boulder. Um and they're probably looking at consolidating. I mean, they're not talking about it yet because everyone's gonna lose their minds, but they're probably gonna need to close some elementary schools. So um, you know, and then that's gonna have impacts on middle schools and high schools and I don't want to get in trouble with any of my fellow board members or anyone else. But but yeah, just the aging of the United States and the aging of Boulder, especially given that it's really unaffordable and families mostly can't live here. Um, you know, that's something that I'd love to see come forward, you know, and maybe just get a little update from BVSD, talk about that, because I think it's an overarching trend that that is interesting to me when we see things come forward and like, how does that affect how we think about, you know, missing middle and so on? Um so I would be open to one, um having more of those topics come forward when we have a shorter agenda. I know that's also kind of part of the people we invite to come, because sometimes we go longer than we expect to, so that gets back to us running tight and timely meetings with, when possible, um somewhat predictable timestamps and around when we think we'll get through things. Um secondly, you know, we we do often have kind of um a space and opportunity for a debrief at this point at the end of the night, but it hasn't been super formal. Um and we haven't necessarily had like questions to prompt. I think I think we've used it effectively to kind of diffuse uh particularly intense meetings that we've had and and kind of recognize and appreciate each other, but we haven't necessarily used that debrief time to um constructively talk about, oh, like, and you know, use you use this tool, or maybe it would have gone smoother if we'd done this. You know, we're we're not doing those kind of debriefs. Um I'm not entirely sure how to lead them, but that might be useful. And then I would be open to um potentially doing another um retreat, but honestly, not until next year. Um I would be open to doing it um sometime in in the spring, but um to carve out time again uh this quickly, and especially as we're rolling into November and December, I think it's just, it would be hard for me to do that. Um, but yeah, I'd be open to doing that and um I I kind of, I immediately went to a social place. I was like, yeah, let's like hang out socially. We used to like be able to go out and get dinner and like grab a drink or something after. If people wanted to, like, we wasn't, you know, pressured, but you know, there'd be sort of celebratory meetings and um we don't get to do that. I know, I don't know what the city's finances are like, but I know you haven't had to buy us dinners. So uh perhaps there might be a little money, money for food or something like that. So um, you know, I I would be open to that uh in the future, and it might be nice to have a little bit of a a social aspect as well as like a working meeting. It might be pleasant. So that's kind of where I am.
George.
I'll I'll be pretty concise. I I think um what Lisa said um rang truest to me. I I almost would agree with everything she said. I I'm not ready for another retreat until next year. I just don't have the time, my schedule. Um I do like the idea of um to the extent that people want to get together as a group. I I think we can accomplish a lot informally. Um getting on the same page. Um so I like that idea. And then um and then the idea of bringing kind of what ML said or 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 what Lisa said around bringing in sort of subject matter experts um that that we kind of uh can group on. I I found the affordable housing um thing that we did last year really informative. Um I thought that was really helpful as a board member. Um so I I would encourage something like that and then using matters. I I I like the idea of debriefing after meetings like this um you i- in the matter section to the extent that we can. Uh because I think there are, there are opportunities for um efficiency in our meetings. Only to that.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Sharon? No, that was quick. All right.
Brad had a tender.
Brad.
I just want to acknowledge everything I heard. Um and I would put it in two big buckets. One, future retreat ideas. And then kind of ongoing education opportunities uh with some additional thoughts in there. So certainly got all that. And I recall, we do have a debriefing with the facilitator, so um we will definitely circle back on these things. Thanks.
Can I add one other thing, Brad, that maybe we didn't touch on here, but I think you've been talking about, and that is um um, you know, to the extent we can do it appropriately with noticing public if we need to and so on. Um but more opportunities when there may be already happening to like take a tour with an arborist of like the canopy, if it's already happening, and like, maybe we don't all go, but like, people who can and it happens to fit into your week, you show up, you know, or like the bike tour or um whatever. A a lot of those kind of got put on hold understandably because of COVID, um even outdoor stuff. And I think now I assume some of that's opening back up. Um and that would be a nice chance to have some of those informal conversations, so maybe not hang out and do work as a whole big group, but get to say hi to each other in person. And, you know, if people can make it to a walking tour, a bike tour, a lecture, or a I don't even know what it is. Um I think it'd be nice to to have those sprinkled in, but not have them be like a required, you have to be present, like thing, but just, you know, get to see each other at some of those as well would be nice.
Thank you.
Okay. And uh do I understand correctly, we'll be meeting in person starting next month, and we might have a chance to sit together and, you know, eat dinner and so on in association with that, which may address the social aspects.
Yeah, uh actually, maybe Amanda knows more than I, but uh what I had heard this week was that there was going to be an attempt to try to get each of the city boards an opportunity to meet uh one time by hybrid. Uh but that does involve a lot of staff training and uh and also room availability and technology. So uh I would not necessarily anticipate that next month. Uh we're certainly working towards that, and that's both the desire of staff and city manager's office, that always has been. But but we and also counsel, but um but we'll have to kind of ease into it. Do you know any more than that, Amanda, or is that new for you too?
No, that's as much as.
I know also, Brad.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Mark.
Um well, gee, I agree with everyone on everything. And and I I'll just make this kind of concluding suggestion that um sure, let's let's not have another retreat until next year. But that retreat, I would like to ma- ensure that the board has uh more opportunity to uh have some input on what happens, the amount of time for training versus board uh uh real retreat sort of topics. I'm also, I hear, and I I think this is a great idea, that we use our time uh at the discretion of the chair and vice chair uh under matters that any board member should feel free to suggest to the board or to the chair, hey, could we address this issue next time under matters from the board? And and an email can go out, we can send emails to the entire board one way and say, gee, I really think this is a great idea. This is a topic I'd like to address. I have this frustration, whatever it might be. And and we we do that. We don't do seven of those in one meeting. We do it uh uh we each get one over the course of seven meetings or whatever. And um an example, and also the whole educational aspect, we tend to deal with these very um compartmentalized agenda items, the DCS update, chapter six and chapter nine. And um there are lots of opportunities for additional education. I don't know if anyone on this board has ever seen Clay Fong's presentation on Boulder's history of housing and and inequities. It's a fantastic presentation done by the city. It's twenty minutes, thirty minutes long. It it's it's wildly educational. And um that would be one of my first suggestions for uh an agenda item um at an upcoming meeting.
Sounds very interesting. Yeah.
Seconded.
Yeah. Maybe we should uh take the initiative to contact him and see when he's available to do it.
I'm I'm happy to take that on because I I tried to get him to come to Tab, and anyway, that was a whole big deal. But anyway, um.
Clay is no longer with the city. He has joined the county, unfortunately.
Oh.
Right, but he's still in town and still interested in these things, I think, so.
Okay, I, who knows? Anyway, I I will uh I'll I'll contact Clay and just see what might ha- might be available.
Thanks.
May I? I I don't want to cut this short, but I know we have a member of the public who's been waiting to talk about um the uh CU project and the inner, you know, on the Hill Hotel. Um and I think she was expecting that we might talk about that around seven or seven thirty, and I and she's still with us.
Okay, well, we better. All right. That that's the other matter that I was thinking of and uh uh it I I think would be interesting if uh to hear her comments. I'm I'm not even sure who it is that you're talking about here.
Uh it was um the person who commented in the open public comment.
All right.
Yes, about the Hill Hotel. And then, John, you had mentioned that we might be bringing that back up again in matters.
Yes, and and that was uh uh me who was uh and Mark have have uh talked about that quite a bit and were concerned. Uh so the the issue there, I think we're all familiar with. That's the location of the bike path going up the hill and uh what happens with Grandview. And I think Brad has some comments on that. And uh perhaps uh we should hear Brad's and then uh and then see if there's a other thoughts from Sue Prant and members of the board who are interested. So Brad?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um really, just a question of how you'd like to proceed. I'm happy to give an overview and update of where we are in the process right now. Uh alternatively, if uh board members have questions that they'd like to ask uh just kind of cold, uh we can, I can do that. So I'll I'll look to you for direction, Mr. Chair.
Okay, why not? Why don't you give us the uh the what's going on? And the city's version of things and uh.
No, I appreciate that. So without giving too long of a history, um I think uh many in this group, if not all, are aware that the was uh a very protracted, as I understand it, um engagement with CU years and years ago about uh the potential for uh Conference Center Hotel. Um initial thoughts from the university were to put that on the east side of uh the university campus uh through a whole bunch of discussion that I'm, you know, not aware of. Um but I understand public input as well was uh encouragement and ultimately agreement by the the university to have it located near the downtown, so that there would be a uh activation and reinforcement of uh activity in and around the downtown area. Um that resulted in a series of memorandum of understandings, one of which gave the city um some limited review of the site plan uh limited in the context that uh CU as a subdivision of the state is not subject to the city zoning or building code. The review of that took place uh late last year. Uh the other element that intersects with the city is both the right-of-way permit, which includes access control permit, sometimes called out as separately, but a right-of-way permit and then a review of construction drawings for elements uh outside of the property line. Uh so streets, utilities, those kind of intersecting elements. Uh so those are the two things that were uh submitted at some level uh in early in the year, uh March, April, if specifics matter, we can get that. Um and then uh review through kind of the midsummer. Uh that um is about the time I came on, so I've got more direct uh, you know, re- relations after that. Uh there was a onsite uh meeting with the community members, council members, CU, uh city staff as well um to kind of uh discuss around those com- those comments in that first review. Uh subsequent to that, CU uh needed to address comments brought up by city uh city staff, which reflected uh the conversations and at least reflected in part the conversations of that walk-around. Um that recent middle uh was expected and intended to address those items. Uh we have gotten that recent middle as of uh early last week and are just starting to go through it. Uh as you all can appreciate, they've acknowledged, uh we're working on multiple projects, so it's one among many, but we also know it's a priority, so um it has gotten the beginnings of uh a deeper look. And we are um I'm not on a specific timeline to get those comments back to CU, but obviously working to to do that expeditiously. In the meantime, we've uh continued uh a- a- as just an aside, all, you know, all records, uh public records, which includes most land use cases at uh if not all, uh licenses, site plans, uh really most of what we deal with. Public record is available and accessible uh to the public, and and we're always happy to sit down and talk with people about what's being proposed and uh you know, by by nature, get feedback during that to those discussions. Uh we are going to have one such discussion on Friday morning with uh representatives from community cycles. Uh there may be other community members who want to sit down, um made the same offer to council members. We would make that same offer to you uh as individuals uh of the public to um go through that in detail, or we go through it in detail with you as well. One uh timeline question that had been a question at one point of my mind and uh by implication, bit of a concern was uh news at one point that uh we thought, or I thought, at least, CU was going to be starting construction or dirt moving, I should say, in October. Uh I've ensured that is not the case, and the earliest that would be would be December. I've ensured that is not the case, and the earliest that would be would be December. And that that even is not an absolute. CU for its part has said that they would commit to, you know, the iterative process that we're in right now to get the right-of-way permit and review of the construction drawings, so we are at that, that second, I think, review stage, and that's what we know.
Well, thank you, I think Sue Prant may have some thoughts for us also. Can you allow her to speak to us?
Yes, I can, let me get her settings fixed.
Hello. Um, yeah, I don't really have anything to add other than what I said earlier, which was, you know, that it's, the process is really constrained by, I guess, by the MOA, that it doesn't go through the normal review, which would allow for some more discretion in typically, you know, we've worked with previous planning boards when something comes before them and maybe it does meet the DCS, but you know, when you're looking at it, people can honestly say, well, it meets the DCS, but it's just not safe. We don't get to do that here, and at least to the best of our knowledge, well, it certainly doesn't come before planning board. So what we've tried to do is sort of bring it to the attention of council, and council seems to be under instructions not to talk about this project, which is kind of upsetting, given the impact on a major bike path, so my purpose in in what I spoke to before was just to kind of inform you of the process, I mean, Brad talked about our meeting with them, but, you know, we've done a lot more than that, we've studied the submission and how it relates to DCS, we've met with, I met with the hotel today, I met with somebody at CU, I have a meeting with a region, you know, we're doing a lot of work on this, trying to get some movement of just people saying like basically, hey, this is crazy, can we step back from this kind of letter of the law that the city attorney's office is asking us to pursue or asking the city to pursue? And, you know, and let's just look at what's safe and what complies with our Vision Zero and our emphasis on safety and and all sorts of other planning documents that are not the DCS. And so coming to planning board to sort of interested in hearing your interest in this, where you, if you do have interest in, where you would stand and kind of measuring how you might maybe be able to help and just send a message to council because maybe you aren't constrained by the same constraints that council leaves they are under because you're private citizens and you can just speak to this and say, you know, hey, that this isn't so safe, we should be able to do better, we should be able to, at least adhere to our own Vision Zero guidelines, so. That's my input.
Thank you.
Sean, can I ask Sue a question?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Sue, am I hearing you say that the process and the review that is underway will not adequately will not adequately provide the safety that you're talking about?
Um, the city, the understanding, and we're trying to meet with the city attorney to clarify this. Our understanding that we've been told by council is that CU and the Aprican Limelight Hotel is required to meet the letter of the law of the DCS.
Right.
And beyond that, the city staff, planning, development services and transportation can't say in addition, you have to meet our Vision Zero guidelines, you have to, you know, you have to meet their TMP, that they're restricted to simply the DCS.
Right, okay, so I did understand that correctly, then you're saying that that's not adequate?
The DCS is not adequate, it was, you know, within transportation, the DCS, Mark might know this better than me, I think was last revised, maybe in the late nineties, it's definitely a suburban land use plan for transportation. And we've been, since 2015, we've been asking for it to be changed because of that. And it certainly was way prior to Vision Zero and what we know now about Vision Zero and protecting vulnerable users.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sue. I, I can say that from just as by way of explanation, I, from my understanding, staff regards the situation as a staff matter and that it's not likely to come before either city council or planning board in a, in a formal way. Is that correct, Brad?
Yeah, and I, you know, I appreciate you asking that question, John. You know, I think the best way to to kind of frame that is that we always have to be careful, is that what I would kind of somewhat crudely characterize as make law, that is asking or requiring things of any applicant that is beyond the law, so for you, this is a right-of-way permit, it's a, it's a review of technical documents. You can appreciate that applicants, none of you would like it if staff could discriminately decide when things should or shouldn't go to a board for review. You submit a building permit, and staff thinks, oh, this particular building permit is significant enough that we should take it to a board. So it's not, not that input isn't valuable, and again, we have open documents that are accessible to the public, and we will sit down any day with any person to hear their questions and concerns, we'll receive letters on administrative site plans, for example, and and those are things that are brought into consideration. That is the kind of predictability of the permitting process as opposed to making every and not to try to be hyperbolic about it, which is that, you know, literally hundreds of permits and licenses and similar types of things that come through somehow make those discretionary. Similarly, no applicant, including any of you, if you were submitting for a building permit for your, to finish your basement would want the city to say, well, here's the standards written in the book, but by the way, we think that your doorway should be squared up more than what your plans show, because that's a best practice. You know, that, that is, that gets us into dangerous territory where we're exceeding our mandate, and if taken to its extreme and we did you know, force a discussion of any applicant in front of a board where that's not legislatively contemplated, you know, in worst-case scenario, that person could, or that applicant could at some future point claim that there was a following, you know, making a requirement that was not codified and therefore, you know, brings forward some sort of legal claim against that. I'm getting way out of school in my, my, my abilities, so I probably should turn it over to Helen, probably should have a while ago, but that's, that's kind of my simplistic answer of that, and Helen, if you can kind of correct me on on my rather coarse explanation of things.
No need to correct, I think that was, that was a great explanation, Brad, and then in this particular case, in addition to the fact that the city can't add process requirements that are not required in the code in a right-of-way permit process, the city executed an MOU with the university in which the city agreed that it would apply normal and customary standards, it applies to other parties in granting and denying such permit, so the city expressly committed to following the normal practices in addition to the, to the standard legal requirements that exist anyways.
Thank you, Helen, I would add, you know, as a practical matter, there is you know, discussion between an applicant and staff, and that is not to say that we're not asking probing questions, or what-if questions, or how-about questions, alternatives, what about this alternative question, we're definitely doing that. And I, as, you know, the leader of this group, feel it's part of my job to ask and probing questions of staff as well, and do know that I'm committed in doing that on these, and, you know, many cases that are brought forward, both as administrative ones or ultimately for hearing guidance as well. So I hope that gives some context and explanation and also a description of where in the process we are.
Thank you. Laura.
So I thank you, Brad and Hella and Sue for this discussion, I think it's really illuminating. You know, and I, I get that exposing the city to legal jeopardy is unlikely to have good outcomes, because CU has the pockets to sue if there's an agreement that staff believes the city doesn't really have a leg to stand on to require anything beyond what's in that agreement, and then they get sued on it, it's just going to have terrible outcomes for everybody, right? The city spends time, resources, money, defending something that they can't defend, and then that hurts additional projects, right, so you're going to lose on the one that you're fighting, plus you're going to lose money and other resources, so definitely don't want to see that, even though I agree with Sue that it is really frustrating and lamentable, and I don't use that word lightly, that the city cannot do more to protect public safety if we feel that public safety is in jeopardy with this project. So I guess the question that I have is, you know, it's one thing to talk in general about meeting Vision Zero goals or something beyond the design and construction standards that could apply to this project. It's another thing for me to talk about specifics, like, do we know specifically what's being requested that CU has rejected as unreasonable or beyond what they need to do? I guess my purpose in asking that is that sometimes people will stand on their legal rights that they only have to do so much. But if you make a specific suggestion of, could you do this because we think it's in our interests, it will result in fewer traffic accidents, fewer pedestrian bicycle conflicts, fewer bad publicity incidents for this hotel, they might be persuaded to do the right thing of their own volition rather than the city requiring it, so I guess, are there specific suggestions on the table that the city thinks are reasonable and protective of public safety that you could make a persuasive pitch to CU even if you can't require it?
And, yeah, I appreciate those thoughts, and Laura, I guess that's what I was referencing when I said making probing questions. You know, staff is making, is giving probing questions, I am of staff, that type of thing. You know, are there, are there specifics? The answer is yes. Is that a long list? Yes, so that's why I would invite you individually, or I guess we can do two at a time, if such, to sit down and we'd be happy to go through all those, but it quickly becomes a rabbit hole of, well, okay, if we did this, if they did that and that, what happens? Oh, it causes this, well, why is that a problem? Oh, because it's C dot, you know, these types of things, so we would probably, and I'm not trying to catch short any conversation, but we probably would want to dedicate a whole meeting to that, if that's really the kind of iterative conversation. But do know that that is what we do and what we do all the time. You know, I will say that there is nothing in D and CS or our operating standards that would promote or support non-safety, right, so we will not be approving any right-of-way or set of construction plans that is acknowledged as unsafe, now, unsafe, reasonable people can disagree what that, what that means, right, there's, there's a risk, risk tolerance question that follows us throughout life, right, is it, is it, is it safe to get in a car? You know, there are lots of accidents getting in cars, is it safe to get in a plane, is it safe to be at a beach because there are sharks, again, and I'm not saying that to be dismissive at all, I'm just saying that's not, that's not an absolute standard that can be quantified. What is quantified are various standards that are designed to ensure safety and still functionality of a road network, and that's what, what there is. Again, is there more than one way to get there, or are there different ways to interpret it? Sure, that's where I both expect and seen evidence of, and will just display myself kind of that probing question kind of manner of things. And I want to confess, too, I don't fully understand, and maybe Hella does know this history, but I don't know why that clause was put in the MOUs other than maybe CU wanting to be very cautious, because the simple fact, the fact of the matter is, we don't have we don't have the legal right as a city or as staff to, again, exceed the requirements of anybody on anything, back to my example of if you were submitting, any of you were submitting for a building permit for your basement and us saying, hey, we think it'd be better if you used, you know, a type B wood instead of type A, because it holds up better. And you should do that, well, you know, that's when we're making law, and experience tells me people don't like that. So, and again, I don't offer that dismissively, I just, for myself, I don't quite understand why that's part of the MOU, because that seems self-evident to me. That's just me.
Thank you. Mark.
I appreciate the position that, hey, we have a code and we are exposed to legal peril, should we operate in a capricious fashion outside the code? Great, I appreciate that, I understand that, and I but I also, I also, I've read the MOU, that's actually memorandum of agreement, MOA, that it's clear there that the city did not relinquish control of city right-of-way, city streets, and, and that's clear in that agreement, and so I think one of the things that that I've witnessed as a transportation board member, as an involved citizen, as a city council candidate, is when staff wants something, when staff wants someone to do something, you know, pressure can, can, can be applied, and, and, and political pressure from council can be applied, and if council is being silenced, if, if planning board member, and I'm not saying they're being silenced, but if they're being discouraged from talking about this, if they're frustrated with, gee, why, why is it, we weigh in on all sorts of stuff that seemingly is very small, sometimes it's minute, and yet here we have an issue of public safety at the intersection of the biggest employer in town with, with city right-of-way, gee, it does, the community can feel very frustrated with a, hey, it's the code, it's the DCS, when many times the DCS, the DCS does not address a downhill two-way bike lane adjacent to a state highway with a left turn, the DCS doesn't address that exact situation. So I'm suggesting that CU has created a problem and CU has great resources, CU and Little Nell Group, they have more resources than the city of Boulder in this particular issue, and I think it would behoove staff and the political, I think council has shown political will, but they've been kind of pushed away a little bit, I'm just speaking directly here, that it would behoove everyone to place a burden on CU and say, you know what, if you come up with, hey, we're going to do this, and the community's view of it is this is really unsafe. this is really unsafe and really not what we want, that's going to be a drag. And so I I would encourage staff to use their discretion because staff uses discretion all the time because the code doesn't address every situation to urge CU to solve this issue in a way that, uh, is, uh, that results in greater community acceptance than, hey, we're going to have our primary entrance on Grand View and, uh, we're concerned about those students too, but oh, well, which seems to be the attitude at the moment. Now, I'm hopeful that that CU politically with this election coming up takes the opportunity to be creative and to and to come back with a plan that's better than what's been put out there now. And I would urge staff again to use your discretion to help CU see that as a as the path forward.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, Mark. And I I, uh, I think there's some level of that sentiment shared by others. So I don't, I certainly don't take that as an isolated uh, comment from you. I do find it extraordinarily hard for me to describe the iterative and interactive, um, day-to-day, if you will, interaction of us as staff with with, again, I'm going to generalize to all applicants because it it does apply to all applicants, you know, in various types of of processes. But it's very hard for me to not describe that and still come across as somehow us being intractable. Um, that is, that is not the case. Uh, we we definitely, um, feel empowered and and we are professionals. We want to make sure that we've asked the questions, that we've pushed, uh, a response, um, pushback on a response that we've questioned the data, um, that we've, um, made suggestions about best practices. Um, back to my basement example that we point out that a better wood is a bad idea, you know, but, um, but but we also know that that at the end of the day, we need to work within certain limits. Uh, up until the point of, you know, you know, the flip side of this coin is people claiming that we're holding back permits too much, that we're giving too much opinion about things. So you can appreciate that sometimes it feels like we can't ever win, right? Um, and and we're not suggesting that. I'm not whining, but, uh, but just appreciating the fact that um, that there are multiple viewpoints about, um, how much we are or aren't and and it, uh, it really falls on both sides of the ledger. Um, and and to that point, um, you know, CU has created a problem in that they've proposed development and development brings impacts and impacts, uh, have consequences. Um, but but they have proposed is legal. It's a land right. Um, and we have codes that are designed to acknowledge and accommodate that. Um, so is that a problem that, um, that is greater than what they're allowed to present? I, you know, that's that kind of gets into philosophical question um, that I don't know that I've got a good answer for. Uh, what I can say is that reasonable people can have different opinions about, um, what the problem is and and how severe it is. And I don't set that up as a you know, staff thinks it's one thing and others in the community thinks the others. It's not that at all. It's a, it's a whole permutation of many people within staff, within council, within, um, the community having various kind of definitions of what that uh, nature and magnitude of problem is. I I would say, and I would never hazard to speak for council, but I I do not believe that they feel that they've been silenced and it and maybe nobody's characterizing quite that severely, but uh, what what I do know for certain is that we've extended the, uh, offer to sit down with any of them and and go through exactly that iterative conversation about A, B, C, D, why is it saying this? What would happen if if X or Y or G happened? Uh, at this point, one council member has taken us up on that and others may yet, but, um, uh, so to that degree, I I feel somewhat confident in saying that they feel empowered to engage on an issue like, um, like they do on others, like in emails on a somewhat regular basis saying, hey, got a question about this, uh, permit or this application and uh, you know, they they always are careful to not, um, direct staff because, uh, they recognize this policymaker. That's not their role. Uh, but they do certainly bring things to our attention or, uh, ask about the status of things and that's not unusual.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Brad. I think to in an effort to avoid having a a long evening, I think Sue Prant may have one, one or two short comments, and then I'll invite Mark to suggest what he thinks would how planning board might want to deal with this. And, uh, that'll be the end of the evening. So Sue, if you have some comments, we're interested in them.
I guess not. I I mean, I do. I was the one that characterized councils feeling silenced and, um, that was just, you know, I mean, even Nicole at the end of plant tab last night said, you know, I'm really limited what I can say and now I might get in trouble. And, you know, Aaron said pretty much the same thing to me and really Rachel's been the only one that's been like, screw it. I'm just asking questions. Um, so, um, I I mean, I do find that concerning. Um, so yeah, that that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So Mark, uh, do you have a suggestion for planning board?
You know, I I I I I think I made my, um, uh, suggestion that staff, uh, use their discretion where, uh, not make law, but we use use discretion to acknowledge, uh, community concerns about the current plan and to, um, encourage CU and Little Nell to, uh, step up the solution, uh, their solution game. And, uh, you know, uh, they just fired their football coach, right? It's like you're you're losing, you're fired. Let's let's have some, let's have some, uh, solutions here on how to address this issue, which is not is not going to go away with their their current design plans that I know. I I'm not privy to those, to the to the tech docs that staff's been working through. But, um, I do know that we apply discretion in the use of the DCS and C dot uses discretion in in how they apply their codes. And, um, so I I don't have an answer other than I'm going to continue to encourage CU to be creative and find a solution. And I would encourage planning staff to do the same. And, you know, I I I was the one that made the first motion to call this up and that was rejected as being illegal, make law. And, um, so consequently, I I'm a little bit at a loss here of what we as planning board can do other than, uh, to make our thoughts known. And should we want to draft a letter as, uh, board members and convey some of our concerns? Great. But I think it would be a group of individuals would be my understanding.
Okay, thank you. I I have the same perception given our previous discussion on this topic. So I think we'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you, Brad, for and Hella for your explanations.
Yeah, one last thing.
Go ahead.
One last thing I'll just offer up is I'll be, I'll be happy to send all the board members the link to the case. Uh, we have, uh, access for for all cases, but I'll send the direct one just as convenience. And again, the offer stands open for anybody that would like to meet with us.
Thank you. I think there are several who will be very interested in that. And Laura has her hand up.
Yeah, um, for the sake of being efficient, I'll just say, I think this is the probably the third time that we've talked about this topic and I feel like the answers that we've come up with have been the same each time. And so while I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate that it's a very serious issue and that the community really cares, can I ask that we not spend more time on this unless there's like either new information or a new suggestion about what we should do?
Well said and noted.
And I just want to, I want to thank Sue. I want to thank Mark. I want to thank Brad. I I do think it's really important. And so I think we have thoroughly hashed it out and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on anything else? All right. I think it's time to adjourn. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Good night.